We'll kick it off with community development this morning. And take it away, city staff.
Good morning, everybody. Community development, we have about roughly 45 budgets. So with that, a bulk of those are for our different tax incremental districts. We have approximately 30 of those. But we did put page numbers, the handout with all the page numbers for all of our budgets. So if you have any questions, please let us know. But we'll be referencing that document when we're going through all of our budgets. I have some staff members here with me today. And we'll have some folks kind of coming up depending what budget we're talking about. But myself, Kelly Knight, fourth community development director. And then Hannah Schur is our administrative assistant in community development. So community development has quite a few connections to the strategic plan. We have multiple goals in there and then multiple objectives within that. So a lot of our program, our work program for the year is centered around what's in the strategic plan. And then, of course, all the other tasks that we're required to do by local, state, or federal laws. So looking forward into 2025, we have quite a few goals. A lot of them have to do with our new strategic plan that we'll be starting to implement in 2025. But as we go through the budget, I'm going to talk a little bit about what we've achieved in 2024, what we're looking to do in 2025, how we work with other departments and collaborate and working on streamlining services for our folks here in the city. So first, the first budget we'd like to talk about was with inspection services division. That starts on page 372. And inspection services division actually has two budgets within their purview. Both are enterprise funds, meaning they're not tied to the general fund. And funds that these two budgets bring in as revenue is what, you know, funds their services and personnel costs through the year. So with me, I have Jerry Fabbish, who is our chief building official. I know I introduced Jerry, I think, earlier this summer at a council meeting. But Jerry's going to talk a little bit about the, you know, what they've been working on in inspection services, what they're looking to work on in the future here. And then we'll dive into the budget just to talk about a few items. So Jerry, want to go ahead?
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
We're continually to work on improvements with the public portion of EVOL to make it more user friendly. We have updates in the end of '24 and then also in '25. Continue to streamline communication and use of EVOL with other city departments. We're also working with DPW on cross connection, lead water service replacements. Keegan, our plumbing inspector, part of his wage is paid for by DPW. See Click Fix. The use has gone up every year so far this year. We've had a total of 2,142 complaints with 41% of those coming from See Click Fix. This has gone up 70% over the last four years. And then we continue to do inspections within one day. Right now, we have 4,934 inspections with 88% of those done in one day.
So inspections has quite a few key performance indicators that we keep track of. And as we look forward into 2025, we believe that we'll have additional KPIs that we'll be keeping track of. If you remember, this spring, council did give staff direction to look at our codes, look at a code review, and then also look at process improvement. So we're working on that right now. We have some requests for proposals out. And I was just at the League of Wisconsin Municipalities Conference and talked to about nine different consultants there about, you know, coming to do this work for us. So we anticipate that we're going to see some further enhancements in 2025. And from a staffing perspective, as Jerry said, we do share staff and, you know, try to, you know, see where it makes sense for us to share services within different departments and divisions. So with that, in assessors, Jerry did have a handout here. And this is something we do want to touch on. You can see Jerry and his team put together, we have our, the two budgets, and then we have the one budget together, or the one budget then with both of those funds in together. So it starts in 2020 and it's projected out to 2030. So we have been seeing that there has been a decline in permit, permits being taken out and then less permit fees. And then coupled with that, increased personnel costs. So right now, inspections, the inspections fund has a very healthy fund balance. Right now, it's, looks like as of 8/16/2024, it was 2.8 million. So we have a very healthy fund balance. So right now, projecting for 2025, it does look like there will be a deficit of just over $180,000. But as part of that code audit and our process improvement, we are going to be reviewing our permit, our fees. We do this every so often, and we just want to see where we are compared to other municipalities, other communities. Are we, you know, the highest for our permit fees? Are we the lowest? We'd like to be in the middle. The last time we increased permit fees was 2013. So it's definitely time, I think, to take a look at that. So depending what that looks like, right now, this assumption is there's no permit fee increases. So should we do elect to increase permit fees, then, you know, that deficit will not be as much. So we just wanted to show that, that we have had some very good years, and it was our goal to really build up a good fund balance because we know that there would come a time where maybe the economy, it wouldn't be as active and we wouldn't have as many permit fees coming in. So we are happy with that. But just want to let council be aware of that, that there might be times where in the future, we might have to use the fund balance to, you know, supplement if there is a deficit. And this is something we've talked about with city manager Roloff and finance director Collins about.
Yeah. I think it's important to, anytime you have building inspections, the assumption is that the service comes, you know, very shortly after the fees paid. In reality, a lot of service has to take place, sometimes a year or so even later if there's something that a building inspector's called in to do. And there are fluctuations, you know, 2008, we saw, you know, a huge drop off in building permit fees, but we had a great deal of activity that continued with inspections. So those, that's a natural course of how the building inspections run. So, you know, deficits don't necessarily cause me concern because I've been through about three of these cycles where there is a down cycle and then they recover. So I think we don't need to rush to looking at fees because, you know, we've had five years. I mean, this 10-year analysis shows we've had five-year run of surpluses, and now we're looking at five years of deficits. And I would say, just let's wait and see. Let's not overreact. So I think, you know, the fact that we've held our rates solid for 10 years is a pretty good sign.
So with that, that was really the main focus that I wanted to touch on with the inspections division. Obviously, you know, we will be continuing services. You know, we've, we, since we do pay for everything on our own, we account for if there needs to be a new vehicle purchased or anything like that in the future. So that's accounted for in this budget trend also. So I don't know if there's any other specific questions about inspection services at all?
Kelly, I have a quick one.
Yep.
Mainly just glad to hear code review is coming, and I'm glad you're looking into it. You know, I appreciate it. Yesterday, a couple of other departments had similar ideas, and we talked about third-party review thereof as well. So maybe there can be, well, everybody, Julie will help, I'm sure, but maybe we can convene those efforts and look at a broader plan that involves more than just yours. Because we're talking about a couple other places already, so there's probably cost savings in that, which would be great. Other question, I think, is for Julie. We talked a little bit yesterday about sharing employees. I know some of that is in here as well, but I'm not always sure which ones are which ones. So does inspections directly have shared employees with legal, or is that planning? Or is that no longer?
No.
Three questions in one.
Yes, we have one with attorney's office.
Inspections or planning?
Inspections.
Perfect.
And then we also have a shared employee, inspections does, with engineering, or probably it's the water utility for our cross connections and inspections.
Perfect. And I like that. I appreciate that. It's good to know what it is. It's good to hear where it is. I'm going to give you, not, I don't mean to nitpick this early in the morning, it's not that necessarily, but one point of, I was going to ask later about it yesterday, from a legal perspective. But we got an email a little bit ago, not to get into specifics or line items here, but encroachment agreements take a long time. We were quoting developers two to four months, and theirs had taken six. My most recent one that I needed was because it was lost. And I wasn't in a hurry, it's okay. But the most recent one I needed for my property took 11 months, and the one for the bid took 18 and the like. So that was contentious too. But my question along those lines is for sharing people with legal, is there a way that we can look in the future as speeding up that process? So we're not telling developers an encroachment agreement is four months, because that's probably too long.
Sure. Our, the services we pay for with, for the attorney are more for code enforcement. So violations.
Got it. And that was part of why I'm asking.
Yeah. So it's, she does not do any of those types of documents.
Got it. So they come from legal on a different request? Because they're coming from legal.
It's a different person.
Got it.
That we do not fund.
Then I'll circle back with you after this.
Sure.
Because it would be good to figure out, for your sake, how to make that faster. Because it'd be great if it were faster, right?
Yep, absolutely. Yep.
Cool. Appreciate it.
Yep.
So I can tell myself the story, but I just want to hear it from you. I know we've talked about this in full council as well. But, you know, we got a truck that we're looking at replacing that has 50,000 miles on it. I know that's not the whole story when it comes to these kind of trucks. So do you want to just give the 30-second reason of, you know, changing out a truck that only has that kind of miles? Because I know that raises eyebrows.
Yeah, the, so the truck currently has 50,000. We're still planning on using that for the next three years. In 2027, we're looking at replacing that truck. So obviously, they'll have more miles on it at that time. I think we're going off of basically what the city has done before with 10 years and then you replace the vehicle. So if it doesn't need to be replaced at that time, we can look at that as well.
Okay.
Yeah. In the city, we take it to central garage to be, we take it to central garage to be serviced and everything. So we really depend on their, you know, advice as far as when they are, you know, we should be replacing it or anything.
Excellent. Thank you.
Yep.
I mean, I'm glad that it's budgeted for in case we need it.
Yep.
We had, during budget conversations, we had a lot of conversations with Ryan and Dylan from Public Works on how they're really trying to work with the departments on maintaining those records of those vehicles so that they put it out there as a placeholder in the CIP. And then they work with the departments as they see how those maintenance records are, are they trending that you could keep this vehicle longer? Are they trending that you really should actually move this vehicle purchase up? So they're really trying to work on that communication and maintaining those vehicle records so you can decide when you actually need to replace the vehicle.
Absolutely.
We have a, I'm guessing you were listening?
I was listening, yes.
Shoot. No, no, this works. I won't do it again.
I just want to clarify, we do not share an employee.
That's not what I meant.
It's, they pay a portion of, it's similar to what we talked about with the utilities yesterday.
Correct. That's why I was asking.
A portion of our costs are charged to inspections. We don't share an employee.
That's what I meant, and I apologize if I misspoke. It's early.
Just make a clarification.
Got it. Just be careful if you say her name three times. Well, I was going to add the best three times. Now we know it only takes one.
Nice job, Chris. I hope the attorney pissed off.
Thankfully for you, I'm the only one in trouble.
You are not in trouble. Just making a clarification.
I'll go sit.
Excellent. If there's not any other questions for inspections, thank you, Jerry. Appreciate it. Next, we'll talk about planning services division. That starts on, it looks like we're going to start on page 241 here. Yeah. Actually, let's start with page 137, just the general fund. This is for planning for next year. We really have nothing major planned. Obviously, the code review, process improvement, that will be something that planning will be a part of. And looking ahead, planning will have a lot of tasks that they'll be working on as part of the 2025 strategic plan. And something big that planning is working on besides just their regular tasks is our housing study implementation. We'll probably look at having a workshop with council again, hopefully in early 2025 sometime to talk about our goals for 2025 and give you updates. So we'll look forward to that. And then looking even forward into the future, we will be having to update our comprehensive plan. That will have to be updated in 2028. And then as part of that, we anticipate that we'll have a zoning code rewrite after that. That's typically how those two happen. You do your comprehensive plan first, land, land use plan, and then you do your zoning code rewrite. So that will be coming down the line, but just wanted to give you a sneak peek for the future. But coming back to the budget itself, we do have one enhancement in the budget, and that is for our great neighborhoods. That's, if you recall, we borrow funds every year, and if there's a recognized neighborhood association, they can apply for a grant to do some sort of project either in a park or right of way or city property in their neighborhood. We just approved those last week. So we have some wonderful utility box wraps in Midtown, for example. We have bus shelters, Willing Waters Plaza, Little Parklets. So what we're running into is, the program is very successful, but when we're working with other city departments, a lot of times, these projects do impact the budgets for parks and transportation and public works. So we're looking for a budget enhancement of about $20,000 just to help with maintenance costs. So that will hopefully not, we don't want these projects to negatively impact other budgets, but we think that they're still a great idea. So we have talked with finance director Collins, and we thought that if the funds were allocated, whatever, you know, maintenance needs to be done, we could just apply those funds to that respective department's budget to account for it. So that is our one budget enhancement request for planning. Besides that, everything else in planning is pretty much status quo as far as nothing major is changing. I did allocate some funds in the budget to help pay for the code review process improvement plans that we're having done. But beyond that, there's really nothing else too different in the planning, general fund budget. Moving ahead to, let's go to page 241. This is our Healthy Neighborhood Initiative. If you recall, these are the funds that we have when there's a tax incremental district that is on their last year and they're about to close. We can extend it, or keep it open for one more year and use those funds that increment generated for that one more year for housing activities. So we do have a budget for that annually. And looking ahead for 2025, we're going to continue to do all the same programs that we've done in 2024 and also, you know, look at hopefully, you know, expanding those programs. We have a few ideas that we're looking at and working with our CDVG funds also, but the programs have proved to be very, very successful. So we, we hope that they're utilized next year as much as they are being this year.
When were the funds exhausted for this year?
For the, our rehab program is by and far our most popular, and that was this summer. And then we also have sold on Oshkosh, which is a down payment grant. If you're, you know, in the community and if your income qualified, that one has been exhausted. And then we also have one, if you buy a redevelopment authority lot and build a house on there, we will give you a $25,000 grant too. So we've had a couple of those go out the doors. So we're very pleased with, you know, seeing the utilization of our programs. The other one I wanted to touch briefly on is on page 239. This one is kind of an odd one. It's called the Health, or the Neighborhood Improvement Loan Program. It's $218,000 that the city actually received back from a very old, old loan that we received from the Federal Department of HUD. And we actually are going to apply these funds towards the corridor project, a Commonwealth, the mixed income project. So fingers crossed, this budget will not be in the book next year because they will be utilizing the funds with their construction. But it's going to be a perfect use for these funds to use for a low-income housing project. So moving on to assessment services now, that is page 129.
This is incredible.
So we've talked a lot about assessment services this year. And so you're very familiar, you know, probably what we're proposing for 2025 with our revaluation that will be funded with the fund balance, for the city fund balance. So that's going to be something that we'll be bringing back to council for consideration at the first meeting in November. And then secondly, we are going to be switching our commercial assessment consultant that typically helps us annually through our maintenance year. So that also will be brought to you in the first meeting in November here also. So that is factored into the budget because that's just an annual fee that we have to pay to that, to that consultant for those services. I have up here Sarah Rakowski, who is our assistant director, in light of some, you know, staffing. We have Sarah as kind of the interim manager right now of assessment services division. And right now, our staff is working through, starting to get prepped again for 2025 revaluation, but is also catching up with, you know, putting sales in and everything for 2024 still. And fortunately, you know, our residential sales are still looking very in line with what the assessments, what the values are. So we're pleased with that.
So Kelly, the employment situation in 2025 is not going to be a factor in the budget as far as salaries?
Sorry, the, say that one more time.
Employees that we have.
Yep.
Staffing.
The staffing's not going to be an issue for.
We're not changing any staffing for 2025.
Are we currently fully staffed? Have they gone by?
No, we're not.
Okay. So what are, we're not, the staffing is not our purview, I understand that.
Yep.
But budget is. So if there's savings that can be found to do things differently going forward, that was part of my question.
There will be some savings in 2024's budget, but we do hope that we're going to have somebody in early 2025.
And you'll see, because we've got to do, you know, if, we're likely going to be doing a statistical revaluation.
Yes.
There's still a little overtime in there, so the full-time staff are going to be, are going to be working. So that's.
We're currently looking to hire two.
Correct. That is correct.
I see the job posting, like that, there's more.
We actually had one that's been open for a very long time.
I know.
And so that's something that we really want to bring somebody onboard to assist staff during next year's revaluation. So, yeah. So for assessors, if there's any other questions, like I said, you'll be seeing more about the upcoming contracts that you're meeting in November here, your first meeting. But otherwise, please let us know if you have any other questions about that one. Moving ahead now, looking at the economic development division. We have quite a few in there. So if we want to start on page 133, that's just our general fund. And in that fund, we have multiple employees. So of course, with economic development, we have a lot of activities, including the redevelopment projects, land acquisition. We work very closely with planning on implementing our housing plan. We do everything with the TIF. It'll be our department, our division, excuse me, that will be kind of the point of contact for the code audit, process improvement review. So we will be leading that charge. We also have the CDVG funds that come out of our division. We are the staff liaison for the bid, so we're working with them through their initiatives right now. We administer all our tax incremental districts. And then, of course, you know, everything comes out of economic development as far as, you know, land sales and, you know, a lot of the different meetings and everything. So looking ahead to 2025 with the strategic plan, we're going to be quite busy also, but I think we have a lot of great projects on the horizon. So with that, in economic development, we did ask for one enhancement. It's for $30,000. And this enhancement is for maintenance costs for RDA and city-owned parcels that we maintain in our department, in economic development. So when we purchase a RDA property, or if there's even a city-owned property that, you know, our department has inherited, in the past, there was a funding source that was used that probably, you know, it was not the best use of those funds to maintain our properties. And when I say maintain, I mean, you know, shoveling the snow, you know, making sure there's no tree limbs going over, you know, onto neighbors' properties, trees falling over, and the lawn is being mowed. So with that, in talking with finance director Collins, we determined that it's probably best to look for other funding sources to pay our, we pay for a contractor to do the work. In the past, unfortunately, some of the other departments, like parks and streets, that do have the ability to maintain properties, just don't have the staff. And even with the shoveling, like I know that, you know, Public Works, you know, if we get complaints, they have a contractor that does the shoveling. So we've always had our own contractor also that we pay to maintain our properties. So we have approximately 50. That kind of ebbs and flows as we're selling property or if it's under option. And on average, it's about $500 a year per property. But it's just something that we need to have, find a funding source for, or else find some cooperation between the departments to try to help with the funding costs. Julie, is there any insight you wanted to provide or why we're looking at doing it this way?
Well, right now, it's not currently included in the proposed budget. I know we had a brief meet, talk after one of our staff meetings, and James Robbie, the public works director, was there. And we said, I think we need to meet with all the departments that could potentially help, see if there's any kind of, if we can work together, if we could get on the same contract with the parks or the different divisions, or how we could do it. And my recommendation was to hold off on the enhancement for now to see if we could come up with some alternatives. And if not, bring it back to the council as a budget adjustment.
And that's why we didn't recommend it.
I just wanted to point it out. You saw it in there. Okay. So looking at some of our other economic development division budgets, let's go to page 160 to talk about our community development block grant. These are funds that we use for our rehab loans. It's very successful, and we've actually had quite a bit of revenue coming in this year. Typically, the loans are paid off when houses are sold. So we've seen a lot of activity with that. These are for individuals that own properties that are low to moderate income, so 80% or less of the area median income. So we are very pleased that this program is doing so well, and we're seeing a lot of loans coming in, being paid off. And then that gives us the ability to fund more loans going out. The next page will be 164, and that is our bid district. As you know, the bid is technically a city committee, but they do have their own board. And they are looking at creating a nonprofit, which would give them the ability to fundraise more and just be more flexible and grow as an organization. So right now, we do have, we do, we'll always have a budget for them, but what that board makeup looks like in the future, as they're looking at doing a nonprofit, that might change. But we always will have a budget for them. So they are continuing to receive the special charges, the assessments from those businesses in the bid district. And they are looking at doing quite a bit of fundraising and receiving sponsorships. And then, of course, council did allocate $150,000 of ARPA funds to them, which they will receive $50,000 a year in '24, '25, '26 to help with their mission to grow this nonprofit. If we move forward to page 218, this is our, we call it the Community Development Special Fund. Basically, it's for grants. Basically, it's for grants. If we, if the city, we apply for millions of dollars of grants a year and we're very successful. City staff is very aggressive with looking at different types of grants. One, if it will make a project happen, or two, if it maybe saves us some money to, you know, to, you know, do something that we were going to do anyways. We do grants for city internally. We also do grants for private developers or other public initiatives. So this is a fund that we kind of use just for the funds going back and forth. A lot of times, the grants are reimbursements. So this is a fund that finance had asked, had set up for us just to have funds go back and forth, just so we can, our auditors can easily see, you know, the grants that we're receiving and if there's any, you know, reimbursements going through. Looking ahead to 240, page 245, this one is our Community Development Block Grant. So you just heard me talk about the Community Development Revolving Loan Fund. That's an established revolving loan fund we have, but we also receive an annual allocation from HUD for our Community Development Block Grant. And so this year in 2024 and then next year for 2025, our focus is going to be housing. We have a couple of opportunities where we're able to use Community Development Block Grant to help us with some of our housing initiatives, which is amazing. We're also supporting the lead pipe replacements with this too, so if there are some low-income individuals, they are able to use our funds here. So working very closely with that, the engineering on that also. So each year, we, you know, we have some flexibility of what we can use Community Development Block Grant funds are on, and we really kind of assess what the needs are in the community. We do surveys to try to figure that out. Something else we are doing, which is really going to improve our efficiency, is we are implementing a tracking software called Neighborly that is going to allow us to easily track our projects going through, send out notices to some of our sub recipients automatically, and it's going to save a lot of staff time. So we're very excited about that. Moving forward, it looks like page 248. This is our, it's called the Local Go EDC Revolving Loan Fund. So this is a revolving loan fund that the city created over 10 years ago. We had some very large tax incremental districts that closed over 10 years ago. And when those closed, all the different taxing jurisdictions received their fair share of those closing proceeds. And the city took their proceeds and created a revolving loan fund. It's something that the city had been talking about doing for a long time. And with those loan funds, we had asked Go EDC to administer those loan funds for us. So I believe last week Tricia from Go EDC talked about that a little bit, but it's been very successful. And Go EDC has been a very good steward of our funds. I think we actually only had one that defaulted and was a very small amount. So that's very good for over 10 years and, you know, because this is gap financing, but they are very good stewards of our funds. And we have about a million dollars that could be loaned out still. So it's doing very well and we're very pleased with it to have a tool for businesses in the city to help with gap financing. So the next multiple pages, page 274 to 337, those are all of our tax incremental districts. So as I mentioned before, we have about 30 different budgets, 30 different active districts, and we have a budget for each of them because they're all their own beautiful butterflies, we'll call it. But I don't know, Finance Director Combs, if you've talked about our two underperforming TIDs?
No, we haven't.
Okay. Some of you that have been here before are aware that we have two TIDs that unfortunately are underperforming, our aviation business park and then our Southwest Industrial Park. Both of those were the same situation where the city installed the infrastructure for those parks and then they, you know, they put a tid in place to help pay for it. And unfortunately, there's no increment being created in those two parks right now to pay off that debt. So we did receive a grant for the Aviation Business Park, so that's helping us a little bit. I believe we're done paying our debt obligations for the Aviation Business Park, but we do have some debt still that we're paying for our Southwest Industrial Park. So that's something, we talked about it a little bit last week with Tricia, as far as the Aviation Business Park goes. We are trying to get, trying to generate interest in there, at least on the city side. We want to sell that land, but that is something that I know that the Long Range Finance did just approve a policy change for our TIF policy that when, we do have some TIDs that are going to be closing in the next couple of years here, where if there are proceeds that the city, you know, has after all the other taxing jurisdictions received their proceeds, we have talked about applying those city proceeds to the underperforming TIDs. And we want to start, you know, preparing for when those TIDs are closing, we don't want them to close with a deficit. We do have the ability to extend those TIDs. We can keep them open for an additional six years, but we might need those six years too. So we are trying to be very proactive and start to, you know, fill that gap with that deficit. Julie, is there anything you wanted to add about that?
I think right now, the way we have kind of discussed it is those TIF closure funds would go into a separate TIF fund on its own. So I know we had discussed back and forth that they would be utilized for those underperforming TIFs, but we didn't necessarily want to give it to the underperforming TIFs right off the bat, just in case, awesome, there was this big business that came in. Because then anything that generated from that income would have to be split between all the taxing jurisdictions, whereas if it's in a deficit, then the city eats it by themselves. So we were really going to keep it in that separate fund to bail out those underperforming TIFs, but not until the closure, so that none of those bail funds would have to be split with the other taxing jurisdictions, if that makes sense.
Julie, where does that special fund live?
It hasn't been created yet.
When it's created, where will it live?
It will live by the TIF funds. It will be in those same area.
So not general fund, not fund balance, not special revenues?
No. It will be, well, all TIF are really in those capital projects, special revenue funds, but it will be its own fund.
Perfect, thank you.
Kelly, I have a question about TIF 26 specifically. I know I asked this to Go EDC last week. In terms of TIF 26 and just underperforming TIFs generally speaking, I really am not interested in chasing good money after bad and trying to bail out TIFs that have generated no increment. And I know that we've gotten some interest on the Aviation Business Park, but we have no debt so far. So my question is about rezoning for this TIF. I know other people may have asked you that before. Do we have at least a contingency plan in place if no increment is generating, say, an extra four months?
Yes. The city has started that process and will be, and not so much rezoning, but there are restrictive covenants that say it has to be aviation business.
Sure, removing those and recharging.
Exactly. It's set for heavy industrial, so we're ready to go there. And that's just for the city side. The airport side has to have some sort of airport use.
But that's a whole different.
It's a whole different story and they have to lease their property. But we are totally ready. It's zoned appropriately for to be any sort of heavy industrial. The utilities are in, the infrastructure is in, so that is what we have been pushing.
Right, and I just, I think it's good to explain to residents that we're not going to continually throw money at what essentially has become a white elephant.
Unfortunately, the idea behind it did not materialize. So we live and learn, we move forward, and that is what we are, we're trying to get any sort of, you know, use there. And we have had some interested folks in that area because that side of town is desirable. It is near one of our industrial parks, so we hope that we will have something going, purchasing the city's property at least soon.
Right, and I like the idea that initially, and I know staff did a great job putting it together, but at least on the city side, that it's good to hear that there are alternatives being discussed. And it is a great part of town, which is something that didn't pan out this time around at that time.
Yeah, we're seeing a lot of businesses are trying to build as much as they can on their existing parcels. And a lot of them are built out. So I do hope we will see some movement still in the future, but for right now, yeah, that's the direction we're headed.
Yeah, any money we put in there, I, there's, I don't think it's going to be a case of good money after bad because everything we've spent is already in the ground, so we aren't going to have any additional. This is, while it's deed restricted for aviation, it's tool for virtually anything. So we're, we're good. I think it's just going to be a matter of changing the restrictive covenants and then marketing it that way. And as Kelly said, once businesses have used their land and they're out of land, then they're going to be turning to us. And we still have reasonably priced land and then.
Absolutely.
Then we can take a look at it. So I mean, the point from Chris's question about, you know, where's it going to be? It's going to stay, on this page, it's with the blue and white lines, I mean, it's going to stay on that and you'll be able to see it. And I think Julie's strategy is sound because we don't want to just put it into a fund and then say, oh, we really don't need it there because we've had some success, so let's keep it here and then use those flex, use it as flexibly as we can so that it's like, all right, this one needs it, we need to close this one, now let's, let's put it there. And I think that's your strategy.
Oh yeah, I have a question. You know, clearly it's some great property, but having great property in and of itself does not necessarily mean that it's going to be utilized. So what efforts are, what efforts have we taken to sell the property for someone to go out, just list it, but to go out and have a list of potential buyers and knock on a door and say, hey, we have this available, are you interested? Because that could change the game.
Absolutely. So the best, you know, place we go to find those potential buyers is EAA. Every year, we're out there at EAA with our partners, The Chamber, Go EDC, The Bid, and the CVB. And we talk a lot about our properties that we have because we are talking to a lot of business owners and folks that, you know, they would love to maybe have a satellite office here. And then of course, when we have requests for proposals or sites, we always submit it as part of that too. It is shovel-ready. It's been designated as shovel-ready, so that's very attractive to people too. So we do reach out and then even our existing businesses here in the city, as I mentioned, some of them are growing out of their site. And if they're in the area, having another facility very close by is attractive too. So there have been actually a couple, as of recently, we have talked to about that, our property specifically, because they're growing out of their existing site.
What about some of the EAA publications that they send out? I mean, I don't know, would that be something that'd be worth?
We have.
Have they had in there or did we give you a story about them?
We do, yeah, we do advertise in that. And then we actually even reached out to like site selectors that focus on aviation-type businesses. We did like a familiarization tour where we brought them in, showed them the area and everything. And so we have tried different, you know, types of avenues to try to generate some business. And like I said, the big thing is we're having more conversations now that we're stepping back from requiring it to be aviation, you know, related businesses, because that just opens the door to so many other uses that would be zoned appropriately in that heavy industrial district. So no, we are trying our hardest to get something in there because we would love to have, you know, more activity in that area.
Right. And I. We do work with real estate people in terms of if they have a client and they'll, we'll work with them and sign a contract if we, if we need to. It hasn't really happened too much, but we'll work with the, with the.
Absolutely.
Commercial, industrial realtors.
This TIF district council has heavy competition from Appleton. I mean, Appleton's Aviation Business Park is heavily subsidized by the federal government. They get millions of dollars a year to put in expansions. They just put in a new one. So I mean, we're competing in an aviation field that 15 miles away has, I would say, a lot more tools than us.
Seriously, up y'all.
Yeah, yeah. And I guess, question Kelly, how many total TIF districts do we have active right now?
Approximately 30.
Okay, and then would you say, I guess, how many are kind of like underperforming?
Two.
Two.
Yeah.
So I, I just, and I thought that was somewhere in the neighborhood. I just wanted to point that out. I mean, I look at TIF districts as kind of like our investment portfolio. And if you're having the vast majority of your, like investments in the city are positive or doing well, the network is healthy. Obviously, want to keep an eye on the two that are kind of a little in the gray, but I feel like we, we focus a little bit, the public and maybe council sometimes focuses on the negative ones a little bit. But overall, we're very healthy in our TIF, our TIF districts. And I think we've, we've done a good job at, the policies we have in place keep us safe, right? I mean, we're pretty safe with the way we're lending out money, but also help to grow the city, so.
We're definitely a leader in the state as far, as far as our TIF policy and how we handle TIF. We get a lot of calls from other municipalities all the time. So it's, it's something that actually, looking at 2025, we want to take a look at just our TIF policy again to see if there's any improvements we can make. So that will most likely be something that we'll be talking about with council to get your thoughts on. But talking of, speaking about the number of TIDs, we do have some that are looking, they're getting close to closing. And then we do have some that have already, you know, met their debt obligations, they're finished paying, maybe we're done paying the pay-go. So we are working with Finance Director Combs and then our Financial Consultant Ellers and looking at maybe closing kind of a bunch, I won't say a bunch, multiple TID districts at once, just because per state statutes, if it has met all of its obligations, municipality should look at closing it. So of course, we're all, we're going to extend them for that one extra year so we can obtain those, you know, the housing funds that we can use in our Healthy Neighborhood Funds initiatives. But we will have probably about five or six TIDs that will be closing all at once. And then the proceeds will be, of course, divided up accordingly to all the different taxing jurisdictions. And moving on from TIDs, we have a couple more here. Page 350, we have our Industrial Park Land Fund. This is the fund that has been used to purchase industrial park land, our business park land. And if we sell industrial park land, we also could put the proceeds into this fund also. So this is something that, as Julie says, we're land-rich, cash poor in this one, but is there any insight that you can offer on this one, Julie? No?
No, not really.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. So it's just, it's just our fund and we do have a small budget that we do use for, you know, any maintenance costs or anything like that we have to maintain. We have a little spur up in the North Industrial Park, a rail spur that we have to maintain looking ahead to next year, but very minimal expenses.
But we're anticipating a land sale next year with, in the Boschwood property, correct?
Yes. So those proceeds will go right into this fund. And then the other, the last one is our Redevelopment Authority Fund, and that's page 391. And this is really more so of a pass-through fund. We have our Redevelopment Authority, but of course, we do not have, they don't have their own budget, well, they're not allocated funds. So if the Redevelopment Authority wants to purchase a property, they do always have to come to council. But we use this more just for a pass-through so we can monitor the funds that the Redevelopment Authority has. And then as I mentioned before, with maintenance, a lot of times Redevelopment Authority purchases properties using Community Development Block Grant funds, CDBG funds. So we also use this to track that also because for a lot of our reporting requirements, we do have to closely track those funds. And that is it for all of our budgets. Are there any other questions? All right.
I have a random que, I have a random question. How many, do you know how many lots the Redevelopment Authority owns right now?
Well, between the Redevelopment Authority and then our department also maintains, like when the city, when they took out the railroad tracks in the central city. We inherited those, so technically they're city-owned, but we maintain them. So we have approximately 50. Some are very small parcels, but they still have to be mowed and everything, so approximately 50.
And the, and you maintain all, the RDA doesn't have like its own, like line item for maintenance or anything?
It, we do allocate funds, but since in the budget, but, we have it in the budget, but, you know, they don't have their own funding. So we hire a contractor to do the mowing and to do the snow removal. But that's what we kind of talked about earlier with that budget enhancement, finding a funding source for those.
No, the only reason I ask, I know some communities, their redevelopment authorities are almost like divorced from the city.
Yeah.
And it sounds like the, our RDA is a lot more integrated.
It is. It is.
Sure.
It is, yeah. And really, our RDA was created to help with that blight determination.
Sure.
So that is their main role. But yes, you are correct. Some of the communities have it set up differently.
Sure.
Trying to operate in the same direction, right? Start trying to have the same, same path forward, you know, we're operating in, because council being concerned, things with our RDA can kind of operate independently, but yet, you know, they should be following, we're in the same direction that we want to go collectively.
Yes, and that's something that we've been talking a lot about at RDA because we do want to make sure that as RDA is discussing properties or looking at redevelopment districts or different initiatives, that they are following council guidance. So I share a lot with what council, with the messaging and what we hear from council, we share that with RDA members. So we're all aligned in our vision.
Well, one of the primary reasons that the RDA exists is that they can, they have certain protections in acquiring properties, and we're gonna talk a little later about the grant. And, you know, potential opportunities there. And it's about using the Redevelopment Authority to perhaps purchase some land, gives us those protections once we get a VPLE or something like that.
And from an environmental standpoint, there's some, yeah, flexibility that we have through the RDA.
Yeah, I mean, that's what happened with the arena. The RDA owned it for a time and then, once the VPLE, the whatever that, it's the environmental exemption, I won't get into it because I can't remember all the, the letters. But essentially, we do that and then we, I say, it's really the RDA, the Redevelopment Authority owns it, gets the environmental exemption, and then we can sell it to a private property to give them protection so in the future, they can, they don't have that liability. The state has pretty much signed off on it.
Yep, and that's what the Mill on Main is doing, whose groundbreaking is this week, so.
Couple of questions in the CIP for planning.
Sure.
So one, Farmington Workforce Housing.
Right.
Partially unfunded for '25, you gotta find a funding source if council still wants that to go forward.
Yes.
Right now, we gotta find $320,000 yet to, to make sure that that's.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
I-41 pedestrian bridge, obviously, that was a big thing. We got a nice grant from the federal government, yet we've gotta still fork over a little cash to make that happen, and that's in '25.
Yeah, we do. It is an 80/20 match, so it is very favorable terms. But yes, it, it was split up over three years because the project will take a while. So we did split up our CIP request over three years.
And then, well, the other two is Ferno Ave and then for me, Riverwalk.
Yes.
Same, similar conversations as to last year's budget cycle. You wanna talk about Ferno Ave? Because James didn't talk too much on it, he deferred to you a little bit.
Okay, I'll talk about it, yeah.
And the why still. Did, okay. But we were also hoping to get, at least by the date today, a projected funding source for Ferno Ave. There was suggested that there was excess funds from other construction projects that potentially could help fund that.
Oh, okay.
But to be able to make the decision, we need those numbers.
Okay.
Want to talk about Ferno?
Yeah, I can't talk about the fund, the funding source, but I can talk about.
The project.
Yeah, I think the project will have a huge impact in that area of the city. I think council is aware that Valley Christian did purchase property in that area. So we will have to, or Valley Christian will have to install some sort of portion of Ferno for their school. And we are selling about close to 80 acres of property. We call it the Boschwood property, but its property in our northwest industrial park will be sold to a, to Lindy Air, which will have a facility there, too. And we have multiple folks interested in our property to the south of that. So having that connection, I think, is extremely important. Ferno has been officially mapped, I think, since the 60s, 1960s. So we've had this on our radar for a while from a city perspective. And so we do have some infrastructure is already installed. And having the ability to potentially install it, I think, will have a great impact in the area for the traffic and Jackson. I know that we have some concerns with truck traffic on Jackson also. So any flexibility or alternate routes that we can provide for our industrial parks or to get to 41 faster, I think, is extremely important. So I wholeheartedly support it. I know we have, the plans are finished. It's basically shovel-ready, ready to go to be constructed. And I have worked very closely with our Public Works Department and Engineering to try to find out, look for different funding sources. And I have been actually talking to the state about even looking for a grant with some of the new jobs that are being proposed for those two facilities, two projects I just mentioned, to see if we could get some grant funds towards it, too.
And then, last but not certainly least, Riverwalk sections. The next five years, you've got the 14 million for Riverwalk sections. I know you and Chad have offline a little bit about this.
Yes.
For me, it's still not one of the, this isn't one of those things where you build a day will come. Just for me, it's not. In this section.
Right.
The remaining sections, which is basically, for those that don't know, it's south side of the river from Maine to the Pioneer Island, but not, excuse me, no, from Pioneer Island south, basically.
Basically, yeah, basically, we're on the east side of the tracks.
Yeah.
That's our remaining Riverwalk area that has been in our plan that we've had for about 20 years. And so, of course, with the island itself, so everybody is aware, per the agreement between the city, this DNR, the State Land Trust, and the owners of the Pioneer, if they start developing on that island, then we are gonna be required to construct a Riverwalk. Now, when I say construct a Riverwalk, that can mean a lot of different, different things. We have talked to the state and they are open to potentially, you know, maybe instead of doing a concrete Riverwalk right on the water like we do, they said, okay, well, maybe you could do it further back a little bit and have it more of an asphalt path to try to save some funds. But we will be required to construct a Riverwalk on the island when they start construction. And then secondly, we have the Riverwalk going down Pioneer Drive to the south and then going all the way on that South Breakwater on the island or on where the marina is. So we, I have it broken up into different segments in the CIP. And I have looked at alternatives, you know, maybe a more affordable alternatives that we could start with if we did want to continue on the Riverwalk. The most recent one I looked at is maybe starting to install the Riverwalk on the South Breakwater. And if we just did an asphalt path and didn't really expand that Breakwater area, it could be probably about $700,000, $800,000. So I have been looking at other alternatives and then, of course, looking at grants, too. I think once the construction starts over on the Teewell site, which will be this Friday, there will be more movement in the area. And then, of course, we do hope that there will be some sort of development on the Pioneer in the future, too. So I would like to continue because even though our Riverwalk technically ends right at the, where the Pioneer Riverwalk meets the railroad tracks and Ninth Ave, people still continue on, on Pioneer Drive. They still go to the Breakwater. So we want to make sure that it's safe for pedestrians and bikers in the area.
And I know, last year, the conversation kind of, it was around, I enjoy the Riverwalk, I think it's a valuable asset in our central city, that it's a massive valuable. If we can get more bang for our buck, we've done well with state grants in that, you know, on the Riverwalk, and that would be how I prefer to move forward. Six and a half million in 2026. I know there's nothing for 2025, but in 2026, six and a half million dollars in a project just for that is just a little bit, it's still too much for me.
I, yep, I agree. And so staff is looking at alternatives. Some of the grant requirements use, have changed from the grants that we used to get for the main ones on the Fox River. So we are looking at other grants, but we, we are trying to see how we can still work and, and keep those Riverwalk segments in construction because we do know the community really enjoys it.
Well, the optimist in me also has to clash with the realist. And the mayor pointed out, you know, the, the realism of the Riverwalk ones are gonna be based on funding. And that's why we moved those back because if we have an opportunity for Pioneer Island to get developed, we'll figure out a way. Right now, the one that we need to figure out a way for is the I-41 because we do have a grant that funds 80% of it. So, and, and there have been some really creative ideas that we, we really do need to spend some time and share it with council because, you know, we're looking at where the landing spots.
Yeah, we don't know nothing about this.
Yeah, and so, once we got the grant, it's like, okay, now we gotta, now we gotta figure out where this is really gonna go. And we've got a couple ideas, but some of it's gonna involve real estate, some of it may involve closed session because of the real estate aspect of it. But that funding is gonna be necessary. And the Farmington, I think we've identified state trust fund loans because eventually, anything we do with Farmington is gonna be sold. So you can't borrow for that with general tax exempt, general obligation because I'm selling it as a city, I'm selling it to you as a private property owner, then it becomes private purpose. So we can't even use a debt financing except through the state trust fund loan. So that's probably what we're looking at for that one. And then, if you could maybe, when you're done, go, go visit your friend James and say, okay, what did you promise? Because James had said he had put together some project savings that he felt we could do Ferno with.
Great.
Because right now, it's, it's, that's the big question mark. We don't have the funding for that either.
Okay.
That and the bridge.
Yes.
So we gotta figure out where the, where those two are gonna come from.
Okay.
He had provided something back when we were looking through the CIP. I just didn't know if it was updated, so I'll email him and ask. Otherwise, I can find what he had provided months ago.
Sure.
I just thought it might have been updated since then, so I'll look.
Okay.
Perfect.
Any other questions for planning? One more. Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Hannah.
Thanks.
Thanks, Hannah. Good talking to you.
It's great.
You're here, you're here. I know what you're up to. You're always there helping her, so thank you.
Council, we have 20 minutes of time, actually, so we can do one of two things. I know Mr. Fitzpatrick, his staff has already, they're not due till 10:15 if we want. So we can do a couple of things. One, we've got other topics that, you know, we kind of push off sometimes. We could try to talk about those now for a little bit. Or we could invite Mr. Fitzpatrick and his staff up, do his, and then save that for the break after him or during the break, depends on how long winded he gets. And then, you know, save some time to talk before lunch break.
Thanks, guys.
You gonna answer your question with a question? Are you here all day today?
I'm here all day today.
Okay.
I vote get ahead.
Okay. Mr. Fitzpatrick, if you're ready, we can invite you up to the, to the go-on here. Appreciate your listening in and coming early.
No problem.
Council's seeing that all of staff is listening to these meetings in their offices and they're ready to jump up.
Jump in at any.
There's also, I know we joked a little bit earlier, but what's also awesome is because they want to make sure the questions get answered.
Yep.
And answered as quickly and accurately as possible. So totally appreciate that they're, they sometimes jump up here real, real fast.
Yeah.
That was a little surprising, but.
That was a little quick. You summoned a lawyer.
And polish up.
Somebody said Beetlejuice. I was just like, what the heck?
Paul is coming around here.
Yeah, I don't know.
I think I might go first, if that's okay. Just slide over.
I love it.
You gonna go first?
Tony.
The show is yours whenever you're ready.
Do you mind, Tony, touching on the parking project that you're helping us with since that's gonna be a hot topic that I was gonna talk about later today?
I can certainly discuss that.
And that you have all those demonstrations set up for us for Thursday, since that was also gonna be a topic I talked about later?
Thursday is actually.
The credit cards.
What's that?
Credit card, all those demo.
Oh, the, the credit card demonstrations, too.
I just thought while you were in the room, those are all things I was gonna bring up today, if you don't mind.
I've got a laundry list of projects.
Otherwise, I'll talk about them later. I just thought while you were in the room.
No, I think the credit card one and the parking enforcement one are both good, good topics.
Okay, let's do operating first.
Yep.
All right, well, administrative services, that's the department I'm responsible for. And just for folks that might be watching, that might not be as familiar with our department as the council members, we have a variety of different administrative functions that are in, in our area. One of them is information technology. Tony Noonan is the division manager for that. It includes all of our computing systems, our networking, our telecommunications, and a variety of other things, right, Tony? Security cams, you dabble in that and, and other stuff, too, so.
Physical security, video surveillance of all the city facilities, cybersecurity, which is paramount right now for many organizations as that's getting worse, not better. Right now, a couple of key items that we are discussing with collections, finance, police, and transit. We're right now looking at a number of credit card clearing vendors to broaden our scope on where we collect or where we utilize credit cards. There are a lot of different facilities using different software solutions and different point-of-sale solutions, and we're trying to consolidate that into a single processor, hopefully achieving some value over bulk savings.
So just in case you're wondering, information technology's on page 67 in your binder. And Tony, keep going, and then I'll, we can, I can introduce the other divisions when we get to them.
Perfect. And the other thing we're looking at right now is parking enforcement and parking permit project. We have been viewing a number of demonstrations and we have come down to a single provider that will provide exactly what the city is looking for. City has not been happy with our current solution, so we're moving to a new solution which will broaden our abilities, make it easier for law enforcement to manage their side of citations and move to virtual permitting for parking permits, which will allow for more efficient and thorough enforcement and make it easier for the citizens to not only get their permits, but also manage their permits.
And I, I had an opportunity to sit in on some of those meetings, and I would add, you know, not only law enforcement, but I think finance, transportation. It's been a multi-departmental initiative, and I think it's something that will really help move our organization forward in that area.
And with, with the change, there will be a resolution coming forward for the purchase and the move to this new professional service because it will require some new hardware. We're going to have two vehicles that will actually have license plate recognition cameras installed on them so they can actually drive down a street and the LPR will pick up those that are permitted and those that are not, instead of an officer having to spend 10 times the amount of time walking car-to-car, checking the license plate, looking up the license plate, and doing it all manually.
I would also add, there was a significant amount of research associated with this software. We looked at other communities, what they're doing, how successful they've been. And so I think we'll be modernizing an initiative that really needs to be brought up to speed.
Right. Anybody that's driven through the campus has probably seen the one squad they have that has LPR readers on it, which is two cameras that are kind of pointed on either side of the vehicle on the roof. That is exactly what we're, we're looking at in the two parking enforcement vehicles. And like I say, the efficiency gained from that would be phenomenal. It's tangible savings in staff time.
So is it just the officer drives down the street and then like pings them if there's a?
Correct.
Okay.
It will be extremely beneficial. I'm sure you've heard of flock cameras that are mounted around many municipalities that right now do LPR, and that is more looking for vehicles that are wanted or actively investigated for certain crimes or wherever that is. Those are being utilized now with a very high level of success. So this is just off-tailing on that technology that has been used very broadly around the nation. It's a tried and proven technology that's working.
Thank you.
And then, moving on to the IT budget, do you have any key items that you want to stick on?
Go ahead.
You'll see that there is a small increase in the IT budget. A lot of that has to do with the way IT is structured, our, the enterprise funds, I direct expense hardware purchases when they come up for lifecycle replacement. And it depends on the year and how much gets hit in the general fund and how much gets hit in the revenue funds. This year is a higher year for general fund hardware to be replaced. All of our PCs and laptops are a five-year replacement. We believe that it's important to replace them before they fail rather than scrambling when they're failing. It has been a very good. It has been a very good process. It's kept our failure rates very low and our end users very happy, and we keep uh, modern technology on the desktops. So there's part of the reason for the increases. Um, if you look at subscription uh, and licensing contracts, we have some federal and state mandated software that is required. We really don't have an option as to opt-in or opt-out. A lot of it has to do with Department of Justice and security policies that require two-factor authentication, which we were told this year by the county is going to be a requirement for all public safety. Obviously, it was not budgeted for this year, so it is being put into 2025 as a first year mandate, um, for two-factor authentication. Many people have heard of it, it's called dual mobile. Um, council or utilizes it if they utilize our email system on the web, and we're going to have to roll that out for all police and fire, so that is another reason for an increase in that line. Other than that, it's regular operation.
And I guess I would just add, um, to what Tony said, you know, going along the themes of cooperating with other departments and trying to improve efficiency, um, I think we've made some great strides with GIS in terms of our collaboration with other departments. And Tony, maybe just for people that might be watching that aren't as familiar, maybe you can just talk a little bit more deeply about the functions of IT and also um, the folks that you have.
Yeah, absolutely. GIS is one of the subcomponents of IT. We've got central services also that does all our printing, binding, mailing, shipping, and all that. GIS, you will notice on the city website that we've been expanding our interactive dashboards, and we also have what we like to call some experience builder projects on there. Um, GIS in general has been, um, expanding rapidly over the past five years. We now have three in that division, and they, um, have been working with a number of departments, public safety and other general departments on expanding the, the dashboard usage for GIS data that helps make real-time decisions, um, based on what they're seeing on the spatial analytics within GIS. And then we're also expanding, um, some of the other areas like the uh, sewer and sanitary sewer televising program. Uh, we've got a sewer truck that, uh, right now televises the interior, um, conditions of a lot of our in-ground pipes, and that information is actually real-time uploaded to the network in a software solution called IT pipes that then engineering and utilities can view real-time as it's being uploaded. Um, it's been very useful in proactively determining condition of in-ground piping and determining what needs to actually be replaced or maintained or simply flushed. Um, that's also utilizing the GIS component. Um, on the, in that software, they actually have a map that actually lists visually all of the inspected areas and the areas that still need inspection, and we can also go to a specific in-ground asset and view the history of inspections as well as the different years of televising for those pipes, which actually is very interesting. Um, for those that are listening, it kind of sounds boring, but it's not when you actually see the progression of some of those in-ground pipes and how they deteriorate over the decades. Anything else?
Anything else, counsel?
Just wanna thank you for, um, all the work that you do in terms of helping people with their tech issues. Um, I had one last week. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
So thank you very much for doing that.
Um, in terms of this IT stuff, uh, since it all falls under you a little bit.
We have a lot of stuff.
We have a lot of stuff, right? Your hands are everywhere around this, this community. Um, city-owned infrastructure, like internet infrastructure too, I'm thinking, you know, down Sawyer Street to Lake Shore Pavilion, you know, we're gonna be doing some work down in that area. City construction-wise, over the next couple of years, gearing up for putting infrastructure out there, I assume. I know we've chatted before, but make sure the whole council knows what's coming.
Yeah, city electrician department lays, anytime we tear up a road, they're laying conduit in the ground so that we can utilize that in future infrastructure for both traffic signals and build out of city facilities that currently are not connected. Um, with the joint project with Woodville County, we actually got our last facility outside of Four Seasons Building connected, and that was Station 19 on Snell. That is actually live fiber now, and we've been operating on that for a few months. Uh, closed off that project, and that was, uh, our last major build for pre-existing city facilities. Next will be the Four Seasons, and that, um, closest we are to that is Pollock Community Water Park. So as we build out towards the Four Seasons Building, we'll eventually be able to get that connected.
I anticipate that when we do the Sawyer-Ashkosh Ave intersection, I think that's where the mayor was going, that'll get us a step closer, and we're trying to, every time we get a project done, as Tony said, we, we look for an opportunity to extend our, our, um, our conduit. And part of that is, um, the signals. Uh, in, in interconnecting our traffic signals is super important, and so Tony will say it a lot briefer than Scooter will, so ask him the questions here, so you don't ask Scooter this afternoon.
I was gonna ask you about the fiber optic looping project at the fire station, so we'd love to see that that's pretty much finished. You said Station 19 being connected.
That is done, and that is lit up, and we're utilizing it for both data and for video surveillance, 'cause all the, all the fire stations now have exterior cameras so that we can actually monitor the exterior of those buildings, especially since a lot of them are unmanned at various times, day and night.
Well, we're talking about some closed system, right? It's, it's our discussion, we're not piggyback, we're not, uh, it's not Charter, it's not some other, you know.
We all, we own all city strands. Yes.
Yeah, Lake Shore currently is served with a commercial service, 'cause we're not there yet, and we quickly realized we needed internet service out there, so that's a case where we do go commercial, because it just made more sense.
It made more sense, and Charter was willing to actually do all the construction into that facility at no charge. So we were able to get that in there for now, and that keeps it, uh, usable for the public for Wi-Fi, which was clearly a major issue.
Yeah, quickly.
All right, well, if there aren't any more questions for Tony?
Is there anything in CIP for Tony?
No.
No. Um, I thought it might be best for us to go to, to John Urban's, uh, division and units. John is responsible for general services, and, um, in his area, he has, you know, several components. Uh, he's, he, he and his staff are responsible for purchasing, facilities maintenance, um, Ashkosh media, um, just a whole variety of things. So, um, why don't we start with John, and I believe his first budget is purchasing, and I think that's on page sixty-four. John, you wanna talk a little more, in a little more detail about your, um, division and your folks, what you do, and then, um, get into the budget process a little bit?
Sure. So as John said, uh, general services consists of six areas, six budgets. Uh, purchasing, facilities maintenance, Ashkosh media, and then we manage the, the operator lease agreements for the maintenance responsibilities for the Grand Opera House, the Convention Center, and then the Convention Center parking ramp, basically the hotel parking ramp, uh, that's, that's part of the Convention Center. So, um, we've got a great team. I can't, first off, thank enough of my team for all of their help. Uh, we have quite a varied, um, uh, amount of responsibilities and areas, so, uh, every day is, is an adventure with what we deal with, especially in facility maintenance. But talking about purchasing, um, you know, purchasing, we help people with their procurement needs, and we've been, um, very helpful this year as well, I'd like to say, in terms of all the various projects we've been working on. On the budget page sixty-four, we list through some of those major projects that we've been doing. Um, we've been doing a lot more, obviously, with facility, uh, helping, uh, facilities, 'cause it's in our area, so, uh, there is a lot of synergy and advantages gained with that. Uh, when we know where the procurement is gonna go and what we need to do for that, that really streamlines the process as it relates to facility, facility projects and work and so forth. This, uh, last year, as it relates, there's a lot of pros crossover. We've been helping facilities a lot with, uh, in the area of purchasing with consolidation of, of various things like service agreements, uh, bids and so forth. We've always done that, but now because we're taking a more active role with, um, the facility reorganization that we underwent last year, we're really trying to take advantage of as many of those opportunities as we can. Uh, some of the examples with the service agreements that we continue to do are elevator maintenance, the emergency generator maintenance, uh, janitorial, uniforms, fire extinguishers, pest control, life safety, just to name a few. So because facilities is now, we've been adding more and more buildings to our, to our responsibilities, we can take those buildings, streamline all of those various service agreements, try to maximize volume savings, et cetera. So, uh, that helps with standardization of what we purchase, helps with performance of those, of those vendors, invoicing, all those sorts of things. So we've certainly seen a lot of advantage of that. Uh, purchasing helps with a lot of bids, obviously. Um, we try to, again, with all the facility buildings we've got, we try to incorporate volume bids whenever we can. Uh, I don't think that's a real eye-opener for anyone, but some of those examples, the elevator modernizations that we've been doing, we've been, uh, doing a lot of elevators. Whenever we can, we've got one coming up, or we've got, we're doing the library and the, and the museum elevator modernizations together. There's obviously savings, uh, incurred by rolling that all together in one bid. The epoxy floor coatings is another example, where we rolled a bunch of different buildings that needed those kinds of things done. Um, we're gonna get some volume savings there. Emergency generators at all the, um, firehouses recently, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, doing those all at once, there's obviously savings that we, we can realize from that. Office supplies, road materials, HVAC installations, et cetera, roof replacements, we've been doing that for years.
If I could just add to what John's saying, so I, I don't want you to be confused, I mean, he's talking about purchasing, but, you know, one of the things that we emphasize in our department, and we know it's a, um, an initiative that City Manager Roll Off emphasizes with all departments, and that is to look beyond our areas and try to think about how we can work together a little more successfully. You know, John explained how this past cycle, budget cycle, we, um, we went from a model where facilities were managed by each individual department to a more centralized area, and then we were able to realize some efficiencies through economies of scale, and then also by taking a look at all those ancillary contracts that John described, where we had different vendors doing fire suppression, for example, different vendors doing elevator maintenance. And then by consolidating that, we could have one contract, we could save money, could be more efficient. So it's not only happens, um, in John's area, and he's touching on a few of those, but we try to do that in administrative services across our divisions too. John works very closely with Tony in regard to security and surveillance, and we're jumping ahead a little bit because we're not in facilities, but I just wanna emphasize this point, and Michelle certainly works with, with these groups very closely too, when it comes to HR-related matters. So I just wanted to emphasize that point, that it's something we talk about all the time, and I think the structure that we have lends itself to that collaboration, cooperation. When we have our staff meetings, we talk about this stuff all the time. So it's a way for us to be judicious with taxpayers' money, be efficient, and try to help the rest of the departments as, as best we can, and, um, you know, take pride in what we do for the community. So I'm glad you brought that up, John, and please, continue.
Another area that, um, we always encourage, uh, as a consideration, uh, you know, one of the exceptions for our purchasing ordinance is cooperative purchasing. You probably remember seeing those from time to time on council agendas. Whenever we can take advantage of another bid that's been done by another agency, uh, that is a time savings for our, our folks, and we don't have to put it out to bid because some other, other entity has already done that. So we've had a lot of good success, um, with cooperative savings over the, over the last year. Just some of those examples, the AED defibrillators with the fire department, crack filler for the, uh, public works, zero-turn mowers for the parks, floor scrubbers for parks, office furniture, uh, you know, vehicles, uh, so, so forth. So just in 2023, we had over $2 million in, in savings from list price by using those cooperative purchases. So that, that is something that we encourage, and we're always happy to help departments explore as well. Another area we wanna talk about with purchasing is, is the P-card and how efficient that has become, and something that we really encourage folks to, uh, consider when they're, when they're making their purchases. Um, that really reduces a lot of staff time from the traditional paper, uh, process of doing a requisition and so forth. So whenever possible, and if, as long as it's in, in line with the purchasing policy, the P-card program has been something that, uh, we've been helping departments utilize as well. Some of the goals we're looking at for next year with purchasing is to continue to work facilities with a lot of their, uh, streamlining of, of these various things we've talked about, service agreements and so forth. We're not done yet, there's a lot that can still be done. We just need to give the time to, to, to continue to plow through it. Um, of course, we help departments every year with, with their, with their procurement needs for CIP items, for their operating budget items, so we've got a lot of big projects coming up on that. And again, like I said, anything with cooperative purchasing, we'll always encourage people to consider that as a time saver as well. So that's just kind of some of the highlights with the purchasing division. Um, I don't know if there's anything else you want me to?
Happy to answer any questions you might have about purchasing.
Just a quick remark, it's very encouraging and, and very great to see you guys trying to find savings and efficiencies. Um, I know that, you know, it's a thing that I think every department should be doing, but I really, really proud to hear that from you guys. That is, uh, that's good stuff. Two million dollars in savings is no small, no small amount.
Thank you, thank you.
Do you want me to go right into facilities now?
Yeah, if you could, John, that's on page seventy-three.
So with facilities, um, this has been an exciting area for us in the last year, year or two, as we've consolidated and added several new buildings to the, to our family, so to speak. Um, it's, it's been interesting to roll those into our responsibility, and then of course, wherever we can, take advantage of rolling those costs associated with that building into many of the things that we already are trying to gain efficiencies on in terms of service agreements and so forth that I talked about before. Um, we've had a lot of exciting projects this, this past year that we've been working on, a lot at the museum, um, their, the renovation of the Baldwin Gallery as, as an example, the loading dock and the masonry repairs over there. Of course, the police department's Third Avenue facility, that was a big project that we worked on this past year. Um, we did do some elevator modernizations at the safety building and Convention Center. We continue to do those. As I said before, the generator replacements at, at the fire department, seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen. Senior centers had a lot of facility improvements, um, in the last year. We're doing the siding, as you, maybe you've driven by there, the siding's been redone. Also some door entrances and so forth. Um, we've been helping the public library with various roof issues that they've had. Happy to announce that I think we've got those under control, and hopefully, uh, we can take a break from having to deal with, with their roof for a while. Um, and then, uh, the Grand Opera House, we replaced their lift in their lobby. I don't know if you, if you've noticed that, but that's something we've been working on for a while.
Just before John goes too far, I know I was, had the opportunity to sit in yesterday when, um, Daryl from the library was talking about some of the things that he was working through, and, you know, in addition to Daryl working with Finance Director, Director Combs on finance issues, we met extensively with Daryl and talked about how we could, um, work through, um, some of the challenges that he was having with other administrative issues. We talked a little bit to him about purchasing. I know he mentioned HR yesterday. Um, each one of John, Tony, and Michelle and myself, um, we met with Daryl and talked about what the current state of affairs were at the library and what we provide for other departments, and what we provide for the library and what we could provide going forward, just as a way to kind of orient him, with him being a new person, you know, he was struggling to try to understand what he could do. So we've had a variety of different discussions, and, you know, I think there's great potential for us to, to assist him and, um, you know, hopefully reduce some of the costs that he may be, um, outlaying for some of those services. You know, we're hopeful that we might be able to provide some of those services in-house going forward.
If, if you don't mind, uh, Councilmember Larson sent me an email last night asking me, uh, relative to the library, and I think you're gonna see this throughout administrative services this morning, but you'd asked, you know, do we have a, an MOU? And that was something that was given to, uh, to me as a goal by council, but, um, and I say but, but I say, but fortunately, the cooperation from the library has been significant, and I think it's led to, we're effectively getting the things that I would have searched for in a, in a, um, in an agreement. In a, in my mid-year report to the council, I said, I don't know if we're gonna need it, but I think we've achieved our goal. And, and I think that was the, the facility discussions, uh, and that's just one, HR discussions, uh, yeah. IT's still a different animal, but they've got a huge infrastructure over there. Um, but policies and procedures, financial policies, I think we've effectively gotten what we were looking for in the first place, and it's through these types of collaborations that, you know, John mentioned, he, he paired together the museum and library for, for a, um, elevators, elevators, and it's just, John's playing matchmaker on those things that need work done, and so you're getting that collaboration, because John sees the opportunity and seizes them. And, you know, it's just. And you know, it's just, sometimes they're weird matchups, but in this case, it was library-museum, it made perfect sense because it really had to do with timing. And I think that's, you're just really trying to find the right opportunities when they come.
Right. I mean, if we know elevators are going to be modernized and two different buildings, why wouldn't we do them at the same time?
But even, I think, facilities, you know, we have the plumber in here now. The plumber actually has its roots in the Parks Department, and that's where we originally put it, but then we, and Ray did make a pledge that, you know, if you get me the plumber, I will do this for the different departments. Well, now that John has his whole pool of facilities people, now the plumber is in facilities, and it still works on parks, but also works on our facilities here, City Hall, public safety, all the fire stations. And I think now that person is available to serve everybody.
And that was one of my talking points, and thanks for bringing that up, is the consolidation gains of having these areas all in one. We continue to do that with facility maintenance. You know, we merge these resources, as Mark had said. We've had better cross-training, we have better knowledge of these buildings, which results in less call-in time for vendors and contractors and so forth. So, and we have more staff resources now to help out as needed. So it's been a very good move, doing the consolidation. It's not perfect, we still continue to refine it, still continue to dig into it. And it's, I won't lie, it's been a challenge at times, because it is quite a bit at times, in terms of the new buildings and getting up to speed on what's all there and what needs to be done. But it's something that I think in the long term will really help the city, just in the short time we've seen many of the savings and the kinds of cost avoidance, if nothing else.
And just to add to what John's talking about, you know, looking forward to the future. You know, when we were, when we had individual departments responsible for their own buildings, it was difficult to get those economies to scale. And one thing that I think is going to be a future benefit is just understanding where everything is, how old some of the mechanical systems are, or even conditions of the buildings themselves, and then planning for the future. I know we've had numerous discussions with council. I know you have very difficult decisions related to not only this operating budget, but the CIP, and I know you want to maximize the amount of dollars that we can apply to some of these issues. And I think just having a comprehensive knowledge of all the facility conditions allows us to be able to plan for the future, like, and lay some of these costs out over time, over years. So John and his folks can say, hey, we're good right now with this building. We really don't need to do anything, but just planning-wise, and you know, to help finance, plan for that as well. In five years, we're going to need this. In 10 years, we're going to need that. And then, you know, we aren't coming to council saying, hey, we have this emergency, we need this money right away, you know, can you help us? You know, that doesn't allow you to make larger decisions about the community and try to convey the cost or the funding in a way that's going to be most efficient for the taxpayers. So I really believe that we've only scratched the surface in terms of what we can do for the community in the future, and, but it is very exciting. It's a lot of work for John and his folks, but I'm very proud of the work that they've been doing so far, and I think we can do even more.
Well, John, if you don't mind, just to shoot your guys' horn one more time, I guess, a little bit, but I appreciate that Jacob pointed out, you know, the operational savings that they get from their cooperation in all department heads and all the departments themselves. Two parts. One, this kind of stems back, at least for me, in one of my first years, the roofing and like parking lot, but I think you're roofing and AC, like your HVAC.
HVAC, roofing and HVAC.
But what this does is it takes, forgive the term, it takes this side out of the table when it comes to operational decisions of what's the best investment, we have X amount of dollars, we don't have unlimited funds. What's the highest and best use of those dollars, and what's the number one priority? And I shouldn't be determining what roof is the number one priority. That shouldn't be happening, right?
Right.
So it leaves those, it gives the dollars, it gives the responsibility to the professionals. And we've seen, to Jacob's point, some really good efficiencies from that decision-making. And then over the last, at least in my seven, almost seven years, have expanded that into other spaces to say, here, keep doing what you're really good at.
Well, that goes back, Mark came up with the HVAC roofing replacement priority program, basically, where we have a replacement schedule for both roofing and HVAC. But then that was sort of the starting point for the Facility Condition Assessment Report, which is taking that a step further, where we're doing all the buildings now, and we engaged Q and E to do that, so that should be done by next spring, and that will, we already did that, was it 2018, I think is when we did the first one. So this one will be an update to that. Again, looking at the entire building, not just roofing and HVAC, but where it is on the replacement schedule. But yes, that's something that we've been, it really helps the process. If I could just talk about two quick projects?
Sure.
So one project that we're excited about is, and I have to give a hats off to John Rule, he's one of our facility technicians over at the safety building. He and Terry Smith, well, I believe Terry's back, Terry's our maintenance coordinator, they're working on this preventive maintenance project, where they're using the Munis, Munis as a module, where you can track the preventive maintenance needs for all of the buildings. And so we've been working, John and Terry have been working on that, where there's like 492 preventive maintenance tasks in all these buildings that we have to do. It's changing filters and belts and, you know, the normal kind of stuff you need to do. But to be able to put that into electronic form, right now it's a very manual process. We have basically logs at each building that the guys go in and, oh, this is what I have to do, and they do it. This puts it all into electronic form, it makes it a much more effective process. Terry doesn't have to remind them all the time, they would get it sent to them electronically. So that's something that we're excited about. That we hope to have wrapped up by the end of this year, hopefully launched sometime in 2025. So we're excited about that project. Another project that we're excited about, Mike Lang is our project coordinator back there. Mike's done a really good job this year as the new facility project coordinator with sort of streamlining all the CIP projects. It's a tremendous amount of work involved with that. As you can imagine, it requires a lot of communication with various departments, everyone from, you know, planning all the way through to construction. And Mike has come up with a really good process where we do almost like a pre-planned review, where he sits down and he works with all the internal departments to try to streamline these things so that we get the answers ahead of time, and we don't have, we have less surprises as the project moves forward and so forth. So I got to give a hats off to him for doing that. That has really helped us with many of our big projects this year, like PD Third Avenue, the museum projects, even 19 Irving, a lot reconstruction there and so forth. By having that taught, those discussions upfront, working with the departments, the contractors, the architects, it really streamlines the process. Another quick project that Mike actually came up with is he wants to put together a project tracker concept. Right now we have a manual project tracker, we have it all written down as to where things are at. Mike's come up with an idea that I think is going to be very interesting. It's similar to the Public Works CIP road construction dashboard that you can see. We would take all of our buildings, and we would itemize where the various facility projects are in each building in terms of what's going to be done, the status of that project, the budget of where it's at, so people can go on the map and click on the museum and see what we've been doing and what's coming up. I think that's something that people will find very interesting, at least we will, maybe not everyone will, but we'll find it interesting. So that's a project that we're working on that I think will really show the taxpayers what's going on in facilities. Where are you guys at with this building or that building? I think that's something that people, if they're curious, will really find some value in that. So as far as coming up, this coming?
No, I'm, no, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I, it actually goes back to something that you mentioned on, the way that you guys are working together is fantastic, because I'm sure you've noticed this year, the thing that, let's use the word annoys this council the most, is when we get surprises, especially budget surprises, that we don't get to make decisions on. So all of this above planning and foresight and clarity helps us be able to communicate with everybody in the public, and you're communicating with everybody in the public. So just want to say that that's the biggest thing that we need to be able to do our jobs, is to continue to, even like with the library budget yesterday, wasn't enjoyable to see that, hey, this was underfunded for so long, and now this is the new price tag. But we'd much rather have that going forward than, you know, surprises, so.
Thank you for saying that. I know we talk about that a lot in our staff meetings. You know, we understand how difficult your job can be. You have citizens that are asking you questions all the time, and because we have such a large and diverse organization, it's difficult for you to provide answers immediately. So we want to try to manage this in a way where we're planning appropriately and sharing information with you so you can feel confident, you know, not only answering those questions, but then making decisions about, you know, how to allocate funds in the best way possible.
And putting us in a position where we can make choices where choices are appropriate, instead of just reacting to, eh, you're going to want to put out this fire, or the elevator doesn't work again, you know, something.
Absolutely. Thank you for saying that. John, did you have anything else you wanted to say in this area?
Just some of the big projects we've got coming up, I think many of you are aware of. We've got the various HVAC, safety building is going to have some, they've got a lot of older pneumatic VAB boxes, which move the air through the building, those are being replaced next year. That's going to be a big project.
Did you want to move to the CIP, Mayor?
You guys wait till then, too.
So that's a big project. Senior Center's getting a new HVAC unit for their building. Police, I talked about the police department, the museum has a boiler coming up, fire training center and so forth, so.
That's on 406. I think John's kind of going through some of the items that are listed in the CIP for facilities now.
Right. So those are just some big projects.
Some of the highlighted areas.
Yep.
Yeah, and as I mentioned before, you know, when we're working on these projects, and Mike and Terry are very involved, we also circle back with Tony. We're working with him on all the technology, all the, that needs to be integrated into these areas, the security, the surveillance. So it really is a team effort, and I think, I'm proud of the way that they work together on this. So.
That's all I have for facilities.
Anything else on facilities at this point?
I do have a couple of CIP questions at least. One of them, so actually in 26, but it's in preparation. 26, the plan is that the convention center interior is going to get a significant refresh, I assume, but it's nice to at least confirm in here. Working with, obviously we have new ownership of the hotel, they take care of management at the convention center, timeline on that project, you know, impact of that project on the use of that facility, those types of things.
Right. We've been working with the new owners, Dave Helgeson, the general manager. I think I even noted that in our convention center budget for next year, that we've been continuing to meet with them to make sure that what they want for the refresh covers what we're looking at. So that includes things like carpets, signage, furniture, painting, wall coverings, partitioned door systems, lighting, many of the same things we did in the prior refresh, but as the former operators of the hotel told us, you know, seven to 10 years is the max before you've got to, you've got to refresh the building to make it competitive. So.
Actually, some of it was scheduled for this year until the hotel turned over, and then we said, let's push it back.
The timeline on that project in terms of like, are we talking?
Honestly, I wasn't, it's not even on my radar until we get closer to the CIP on that one.
Just didn't know if you guys had.
Yeah, but we did assure them that we're doing everything we can to, because every once in a while they bring up things that, hey, we need to think about this, okay.
I'll politely say that they're focused on the hotel right now, and I haven't heard much from them on the convention center, but I suspect we'll know when the hotel's done, because I think they'll be calling us pretty quickly and they want to get going on it. That's my prediction.
I got a quick question about a CIP item, namely the fire training center and the OPD training facility. I have some concerns about the cost for the fire training center, seeing that it's risen, but my question is kind of more along the lines of, you know, we see the fire training center for 2025, the OPD training center for 2029. Was there any consideration given to bringing both of those together under one roof and maybe putting them in 2027?
We did have dialogue with City Manager Roloff on that issue. I think in terms of the budgeting process, sometimes departments bring their own ideas up independently, and as we talked about, we're always looking ways, for ways to consolidate and maximize tax savings. And so in our discussions with those individual departments, we've discussed that possibility. And I don't know, City Manager Roloff, if you want to share any discussions you've had with those individual departments about that.
No, I mean, I think some of it came up yesterday. The mayor brought up the question with the fire chief, not so much with the police chief, because the police training center just got on the radar this year. They just added it to the five-year CIP. And that was in a study from 2018 or something like that. So a large, for a large part, it's been sitting there, far away from anybody's eyesight. You know, I, several council members raised questions about the fire training center. I think that's something that the council can continue to ask questions about, but we're getting close. So if we're going to do something, if the council wants to do something, they're going to need to do it very soon, because otherwise, we've got some design work done on that already. If we want to revisit, excuse me, if we want to revisit that, now's the time.
I understand the urgency of this, but I guess to your point, Mark, for the PD training facility, you said it came from a 2018 study, so I'm guessing the cost is going to be higher than 15 million now?
I don't know the answer to that question. I owe that to you. I don't know if it was necessarily put in way back when, there was more, it was a study of future needs of the department from an operational standpoint. It was acknowledged that, for example, if you've gotten a tour of the fire, or the, excuse me, of the police department, you've seen the shooting range down there. That's a pretty.
High shooting, high storage.
Yeah, very old shooting range, so that would be part of it. It was just acknowledged that a new shooting range was necessary. I don't know if we ever put a price tag to that, so I don't even know how accurate or inaccurate that number is. So I'd have to circle back with you on that.
A placeholder.
Yeah, at best.
One thing that I can add to your question, one of the things that we are planning for with the fire training facility, or their new facility on Sawyer, is to update our emergency operations center, and that is a shared facility. And that is an important component of that update. Right now, our emergency operations center is in need of modernization, especially considering all the unfortunate circumstances we've had to work through. You know, we know that. So that is a shared component that will be incorporated into that center.
I just still have some concerns about the cost for the fire training center. Like, you know, I know that we'll have some discussions about this when we have to make these decisions, but if there's any way to put them together, that would kind of be my preferred force of action. Obviously, I don't speak for all of council. So those are just my two cents on those two projects.
Agreed.
I had similar concerns to Jacob's. Obviously, I voiced a few of those yesterday, but similar, you know, is it, it's prudent to at least consider, and maybe it's a temporary pause, but at least consider, you know, a public safety training center, to your point, combined, it wouldn't be on the site that fire training is currently proposed for. We have other, we talked about a few minutes ago, we have industrial park land that these would be great for, whether it's south or north or west. We have city-owned land already available that, something like this could go on, and it may be more appropriate to put it in industrial park, for the impact and lessen it on neighborhood. But cost-wise, you know, there's going to be some, you know, classroom space, locker rooms, those types of things, there's some, there is some efficiency that would be gained, cost-wise, we wouldn't know, but I'm right there with him on this. At least, it may be just at least a pause in '25 on that project for me, to at least have more consideration of that. I think Joe wanted to.
Yeah, no, I have similar thoughts, and I guess my question to maybe Mark or Finance Director, if we didn't have to borrow that 7.7 million, I mean, does that reduce our, like, debt service for this year? I know we're going into a budget where we're trying to make sure it doesn't impact the taxpayers as much as possible, but I mean, does that, I know the CIP and the general obligation are two different budgets, but I mean, does that help?
Well, I think they are related. So it's okay to ask these questions. I think, you know, John Urban brought this up a few moments ago, the whole facility study has to be updated, and we're going to talk about later on, and I know that Councilmember Stevenson's aware of this, the grand, you know, the city hall, where that comes in. The council had a very robust discussion on that. All of those facilities, you can't divorce themselves from one another. They're all one and the same, and they're, you know, I think John Fitzpatrick brought up, the, you know, the EOC is probably as important, if not more important, than the fire training facility in terms of what's urgent right now. We had, and we had an exercise, every few years we have a simulation, an emergency simulation, and right now, the basement of Fire Station 15 is our emergency operations center, and the person who was observing said, this is not a good location for an emergency operations center. Oddly enough, that was the first time we were talking about Sawyer Street, and it's like, well, the emergency was a chloro- and it's like, well, the, the emergency was a chlorine spill at the wastewater plant. We would have had to evacuate the emergency operations center. So, you know, a remote site is not, is not a, a bad suggestion.
Or even have the option to have a dedicated site and an alternate site for the very reason that City Manager Rolf just described.
Yeah, in, in the early days of COVID, the basement was a horrible location. There, you know, social distancing wasn't in vogue yet. We were antisocial distancing. I mean, it was the worst social distancing you can imagine. So the EOC is something that is necessary, but we've got to take all of these things in context. And there's a lot of facility needs here, between city hall, the grand, the fire stations, which, you know, and the mayor and I have had that discussion, and then the deputy mayor yesterday said, you know, how does this all fit in with our debt management, which I think is kind of where you were going with it, Joe. So we do have to, we have to take a look at this in its totality, because what was five years ago, a $64 million facility needs, if I was guessing, and I can guess right now, I have the luxury of doing that, it's easily 100 million. Do, do we know that number exactly today? No, but if I was picking a number, I'd pick around 100 million. How do you ingest 100 million dollars in facility needs when there's so many competing needs? You've got to balance that stuff out. And, I mean, I don't envy you the task you have ahead of you, but it comes down to debt management as, as Carl brought up.
Yeah, and I would add too, I think one of the things, just to complement previous councils, in the last, I would say, you know, five years plus, you know, councils have recognized, this is a huge burden for future councils to have to wrestle with. So the fact that we went to long-range finance, we talked to them about how to come up with a system where we could integrate city facilities into the CIP planning process a little bit more directly, that was something that they embraced, they supported, and that those previous councils supported. You know, much like the discussion that we were having earlier, you know, they wanted to have the ability to have these known issues, so they could do the best job possible planning and allocating those funds.
And I think when we're talking about applauding interdepartmental cooperation and efficiencies, then talking about having a separate fire and training center, I also look at it as we're going to spend 8 million on one, because it's 7.7 now, it's going to go eight, and 13 on the other. Maybe we can combine them for 18 and have actually a better facility for both, you know, because like he said, there's going to be shared locker rooms, shared training, you know, you only need so many classrooms and conference rooms, you don't need to double them up. You know, you're, you're saving on the number of internet poles you have and, and all that different stuff. So this is one that I would agree, I, I don't want to call it a punt or a table or anything like that, but like, I would want to look at a combined package there.
I was just going to go the exact same thing. It's hard to have a discussion about facilities and making efficiencies there, and look at these two things and the CIP in different places. It's just, it's a sensible time to look at, so I appreciate the, all the conversation.
Okay, Mayor? We are dabbling a little bit, you know, we toggle from facilities to the CIP. We've covered some of the items. Do you want to reserve the Grand Opera House and City Hall stuff when we talk about budgets that are also somewhat related, because we have quite a few? Or do you want to talk about those now?
That, or if you want to move into other operational budgets, I know you've got Michelle here, we'll move into some of her space and release a few back to, you know, doing some other things.
The wild.
There are other areas, there, there are main areas that focus and listen to us.
Well, before we do that, we have, we have a few more with John.
Yeah, I'm going to continue on with that.
Yeah, the next one is Ashkesh Media, and that's on page 76. So why don't you talk a little bit about that, John?
Ashkesh Media, smaller budget here. Can't say enough about the staff as well. They're doing a great job, continue to be award-winning for being recognized around the state and the Midwest for the programming and, and what they do. Some of the projects that they've done this, this last year that we'd like to quickly highlight, they've been working with a lot of the public information campaigns that you, I'm sure you're aware of, the special assessments campaign, how the ARPA funds process worked, the city assessor's office was a, helped them with the residential property evaluation process, educating people about how that worked. And I think all of those were, were very helpful to communicate to the public how these, how these issues are and, and what to be aware of. And they worked, obviously internally with, with many departments on, on what the message was and carrying that out. So I think that, they did a great job this year with, with those, with those major public information efforts. One effort that they probably don't give us enough credit for, but the State of the City event every year, highlighting the, the work of the city throughout the prior year, and working with Mark and John on, on that. I, I think they did a wonderful job this year. It was a little different format, but I think that the, the reception that they received was, was very effective. The online, the online presence of that, it just continues to grow, continues to be an element we want to continue to build on, so.
No, I agree. I think the, obviously COVID forced us to do lots of things, some stuff that we didn't want to do, some stuff we never would have done. I think this is one of those ones that we probably never would have, or it would have been a long ways off moving into a full digital platform. And, yeah, I think the product is, it's high quality, and I think, well, I think it's better received and it's, it's more useful, I think. And you said the production quality itself, besides just the content, the production quality is not, not.
They ever, they actually commented, they had received a couple of comments from people that thought that we must have farmed out some of the production this year, because it looked so much better than prior years, but it's the same, it's the same, same staff doing it.
It was also like, super conveniently timed, as we're trying to attract a new city manager, being able to have that, and, you know, it's timeless, so you can set it out.
Yeah, and, and the drone, the drone footage.
I really liked the drone footage.
People love the drone video. And, and you see it on the website, as soon as you open it up, you see the drone footage of that, and I, I think it continues to, everything about the State of the City continues, our goal is to push the city as a very progressive, positive, a lot of pride, a lot of community support there, and that, and that's what we're trying to do with that stuff, so.
Yeah, I just want to maybe give more commentary here and then maybe a question, John. As you know, I was part of OCAP back in the day, or 20, 25 years ago, whatever it was, and, you know, I think you, Connie at the time, Andy, Scott, you guys are just really a model of efficiency and the service that you provide. It was, I mean, back then, we looked for programs to do, we had the OCAP card and other things, and I think we did a good job. But the bar has been raised so high, and we're, and we're talking about this stuff. And I don't know, you want to say you're kind of a victim of your own success, but it's, these things now are not, can OCAP, or can OCMs do it? It's, they better do it, because we expect that from them. So that bar has just been raised tremendously. You know, you, you, it's become a, a, a state-class, or is a Midwest, Ameri, United States thing. It's the, and, and I, again, you, Connie, and Andy, I know I'm going back, but you guys were aggressive.
Good, thank you.
And I think, you know, in a governmental arena, the aggressiveness that you took, and you truly love what you're doing, and it showed. And so many people that I've talked to, whether it was on the council or not, talked about that, it's like, you know, I don't know what that budget is, but I, I, I love watching the shows, and, and so the value that you bring for, for the money that, that's being charged is phenomenal. The question that I had for you is, as you know, for someone to do a show on their own, which I've done, and other people have done, unfortunately, it's just the nature of the beast, there are hoops that you have to go through. You know, you have to have the, the director that runs the equipment and the cameras, and then these are, you know, these things that you just don't, run, night-night, run this stuff. I'm sure you've thought about this, but if you had a dream way of, because there are people out there, I'm sure that would love to do their own show, but they just know they're not capable of doing that because of the things that have to be done. Is there some way that you can tackle that issue where people will feel, or where it would be easier for people to come forward, to do more shows, or, you know, some other concepts or anything?
Sure, I, thank you, Jake. I see Jake standing. If you don't mind, Jake, Jake is the operations coordinator, and maybe, Jake, you could answer Councilmember Esslinger's.
I thought you were going to be behind the scenes today.
Yeah.
I think I have wide shots.
Actually, Andy, Andy's covering it, so Andy will still.
My annual visit with council. No, thank you for the question. I appreciate it. So just to let you know, the current process is, someone comes in, they say, I would like
to do a show about, you know, insert topic. We don't get involved in the content of the show, we just try and help them make it happen. So there's two different ways you can do it. You can bring your own crew, we'll train them to use the equipment, or you can produce a show at home, which some folks do, and then they just bring us the show on a USB driver, a DVD, and say, I want to put this on the air. You fill out a simple form with some contact info for the person who lives in the city, and then the, the program goes on live TV. Like I said, we're, we're not necessarily interested in the content, as long as it's local, someone local, a citizen who's taking advantage of the resource, then, then we put it on the air. But someone, we've had folks who, of all ages, all walks of life, who come in, radio shows too, folks who aren't comfortable with computers, or uncomfortable with the equipment. They come in, we train them up, and then we are there to kind of provide technical assistance and guide them. A staff member is always there if there's a show going on in the TV studio or the radio studio. We, we are there, and we kind of, and everybody goes at their own pace. Some people take off and they got it right away. Some folks need a little bit more help, but Scott Williams in our office is great. He works with a lot of the local producers who come in on Thursday evenings. Ion Ashkash is one that you may be familiar with, that Cheryl does, it's been going on for a long time. And then we've got a bunch of radio programs, and, and a guy who, who called his, the production of his radio show Therapeutic. His name's Troy, he just started doing a show. He, you know, really didn't have any experience producing it before, and Scott, you know, brings him along and helps him, and then once you see they've got it, you kind of back away and, and let them spread their wings and fly, and it's great. We, we prefer local programming. We don't want to run, you know, replays of other shows that we, that we get from around the state, but if you are talking to folks and they say, oh, it's just too much work, just have them come in and talk to us, because it can be a single camera with a blank background, and two people could do that show, the host and, and one other person who's just kind of supervising. It doesn't have to be a, you know, five-camera, you know, extravaganza with graphics and all this other stuff. We can help them start small, and if they've got something they'd like to say, then, then they'll wind up on live TV.
Okay. Thanks, guys. Really appreciate it.
That's a great, that's a great question. I appreciate that a lot. So thanks all for bringing it up, but Jake and your team for making it so easy. Because you're right, if they don't know how to access the resource, you know, it can be, it can sure come across intimidating.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's awesome we have that ability to, to allow that platform.
Well, and, and that's kind of what I'm saying, is like, when people watch this, you're talking about the quality, if you're the average Joe sitting on your couch, you're saying to yourself, well, there's no way I can do that. I mean, that's just, that's crazy. But as you were saying, it's, again, there are things that you have to do, you have to do them, but you can tackle those. There are people that will help you do that. I mean, I did it. My God, if I can do it, anyone can do it. So, I mean, if there, and I know there are ideas out there that people want to do stuff. I mean, I'd just say, take a half an hour, come down and talk to someone, and if, if you don't think you can do it, well, then you at least tried. But I really think that you guys can help them out with doing that, so.
Yeah, we have many nonprofits too. I shouldn't say many, we have a handful. The local chapter of the DAV, disabled American veterans, the folks from the local chapter of TEDx, the TED Talks, and John Nieman, who is the executive director for COTS, yeah, he's been doing a show forever, from back when he was with Aurora. But those are some nonprofits that come in and do shows with us, you know, and then we have the, the public side that we, you know, the public citizen side that we just talked about. So whether you're a nonprofit, or you are a community organization, or a citizen, if you want to do a show or produce content that would help get the word out, that's what live TV is there for. That's what the public access side of that, of our operation is there for. So we would encourage anybody to just stop in and talk about the possibilities.
I also appreciate Councilmember Esslinger bringing up that question, and just to piggyback on, a little different direction on it. You know, we were fortunate that he was part of the, one of the original groups to get the Friends of OCM, is what they're called now, going. And I know you talked about that in a previous budget session, talking about different funding sources with the library. And, you know, we're really fortunate to have a, a group that has been in place for quite some time. Jake, can you just talk a little bit about the Friends and what they do, and?
Yeah. The, the card you mentioned, the, the OCM card, is still around, it's still 10 bucks. You can't get many things for 10 bucks anymore, so that, the price on that has stayed the same. The community still supports that. You know, some of the sports groups from schools and local nonprofits will sell them, the Friends also sell them. That's a major fundraiser. And those are, you know, as a Friends group does, those are funds that wind up supporting Ashkash Media. You know, if we have things, they donated our first drone. They are the actual license holder of the radio station, so if things happen with the radio station, they update the equipment and make sure that it's, that we have what we need. You know, they are, they are truly a Friends group in the true sense of the word, where if something happens and we didn't plan for it, or if we need support, they are there, not just monetarily. We've been to the farmer's market to spread the word about Ashkash Media. We have, you know, done a lot of different outreach stuff with them, and they are ambassadors for us in the community, and are, are mission critical to what we do.
Oh, very much appreciated. Again, you know, Jake and the folks that work in that area, there really are only three people that just do a tremendous amount of work, and I know they're very modest about all the awards that they do win, but to Councilmember Esslinger's point, it is viewed as certainly a leader, not only in the state, but in the Midwest. And we have people that come to us all the time that want to tour our facility, talk about the structure, talk about, you know, the fact that we have two television stations, a low-power FM station, how we utilize that in emergency situations to get information out to the community, all the different streams of information. And just before you leave, Jake, if you could just touch on not only the social media, but where we're all present.
Sure. So GovTV, which is the government access channel where you typically watch meetings, like you're watching one live right now, is on spectrum cable and AT&amp;T U-verse, as long as AT&amp;T U-verse exists and stays before DirecTV swallows it up, but we are available there. We're streaming on our website and on YouTube, which I know a lot of council members have told me that you've accessed that. And then also, we're available on OTT apps like Roku, Amazon Fire TV, and Apple TV. So if folks have caught the corner on cable, we are available on a lot of different places. We had to grow and adapt over the years as we see cable subscribership lowering. We, we took that step to make sure that we're available in HD on a lot of those other platforms. And your assistant city manager, Fitzpatrick, also mentioned the radio station. You know, that's, that doesn't simulcast everything that we do, but a lot of the government meetings are on there, including council and county board and school board. And, you know, we, we stream that, and we get emails and calls from folks all over the country who want, you know, they collect stickers from all the radio stations, and they want to know what we're doing and what we're up to. Folks who live in California who went to UW-Ashkash, a lot of my, my fellow RTF alums who wound up out in LA working on shows and things out there, they listen to the radio station online and just keep up with what's going on in the community. So, yeah, we're available on a lot of different places, streaming everywhere. We're on as many apps as we can be on, and we just want to make ourselves available to people, no matter what technological capabilities they have. We want people to be able to watch.
In the social media presence, can you just touch on that too?
And you want to talk about the work with the committee, the working group?
Yeah, so our social media group is a, a group of about a dozen social media managers from around the city, basically any department that has someone who is responsible for their social media pages. Andy is, Andy Radigan, our office, is kind of the liaison for that group. So we get together quarterly, and we talk about all manner of things. Legal has presented to us on things that we need to be thinking about with public records as far as social media goes. Kanan Communications, who works with Department of Public Works, has presented to our group about best practices when it comes to social media. So that has been a really beneficial group. I think we got a lot of positive feedback from other departments on this is nice to just get together and talk shop once in a while and pool our resources, make sure we're all on the same page. And as far as presence on social media, obviously the City of Ashkash government page is relatively new. We separated that from Ashkash Media, which kind of became the de facto government page, but we wanted a defined page where people should go to get official information from the city. So a couple of years ago, we made that change, and Ashkash Media now is split off on its own Facebook page. But we're on Twitter, we're on LinkedIn. Well, I know HR is heavily uses the, the LinkedIn page, which obvious, which would be obvious, an obvious use for that. And, yeah, we, we, we provide guidelines, our department provides guidelines for other social media users in the city. We're not, you know, we're not babysitting or overloading anybody, but I think by nature of what our department does, we have a responsibility to provide some resources and education for the other folks in our, in our organization that are looking for that. So we, we do our best to provide that when asked.
Just one last brief story, and I know John will appreciate this, and Andy's in the back here, I know he will. And now, this is over 20 years ago. This is during EAA. And now, this is over 20 years ago, uh, this is during EAA, um, this is when the Concorde was still flying, and I had heard, and I don't remember where I heard it, but they said that EAA and British Airways is allowing anyone from the media, you have to send in a request to the EAA, and then you have to get yourself out to JFK, and then there's a, there was a British Airways Concorde coming to Ashgosh, so if you got yourself there and you were a member of the media, you could get on the Concorde and fly to Ashgosh. So, the nut that I am, I thought, "What the hell?" So, I got, I got ahold of John and Andy, and I said, "They said local media, well, we've got Channel 2 in town, that's local media." So, we put that request in, and they accepted, I mean, EAA and British Airways accepted it, and quite, and unusually, we were the only ones they accepted. So, Andy and I got ourselves, we went, I'm making a very long story, very short here, Andy and I got ourselves to, uh, to New York, and, uh, that was, that was when the Air France Concorde crashed, and that, I believe it happened the day before we were supposed to go. So, that morning before Andy and I took off, I called EAA and said, "Uh, is this still going on?" And they said, "We still have the green light, we haven't heard anything from British Airways." And then I remember a phone call at about 8:00 that night from John Urban saying, "Guess what? They've canceled the flight now from JFK to Ashgosh." So, British Airways got us back to Ashgosh free of charge, it was a world-class airline, I'll tell you that. That was a whole other story, but, um, again, this is over 20 years ago, and they considered us media, because again, I think with the quality that...
Thank you.
Any other questions about Ashgosh Media? Well, thanks for all the kind words, they were very much appreciated.
Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Want me to go into Grand Opera House?
Yeah, the next budget is on page 253, Grand Opera House.
So, the Grand and the Convention Center and the parking ramp, the Convention Center parking ramp, these are three facilities that we have maintenance obligations per the operator lease, um, so our, our office, the facility maintenance office assists with that, so the Grand Opera House, which is page 253, um, we really just work with the Grand Opera House staff on anything related to maintenance and our obligations. Some of the highlights this year, I think I talked about the lift, we helped coordinate the lift, we've been working with the foundation staff on the proposed Grand Opera House annex renovation project, um, and kind of helping, helping them with their ideas on that. Um, so, really nothing major this year, just some minor little projects here and there, nothing, nothing outstanding to report with this particular budget as it relates to that.
I know previously council member Stevenson had some comments or questions related to the Grand Opera House, and did you want to ask those now?
Uh, yeah, I was just, uh, kind of trying to point out the change and the, uh, kind of scope of work that we were looking with, uh, at the Grand Opera House.
Right.
If you guys want to maybe highlight it, I...
Sure.
I've heard about it at the board, but I want to make sure the council...
Joe's aware of it, we shouldn't put him on the spot.
Okay.
No, that's okay.
Do you want to speak to it, Mark, or would you like us to, or...
Um, yeah, I think we can do it in tandem, so I'll do a little bit of the play-by-play, and you do the color commentary, I'll have time. We have been working very closely with the Grand Opera House Foundation regarding the expansion plans for the Grand. Uh, you may recall that there was a discussion about, um, taking the facility and, um, going into the basement, expanding into the basement. Um, we have taken a look at that because there is a, a long history that people are aware of, of environmental contamination due to the Gunderson Dry Cleaning Facility that was there many years ago, where there, the, the, the chemicals from that, the VOCs, uh, volatile organic compounds, are still moving to this day. In fact, we actually had to put in another, um, or another monitoring well had to be put in down by Pearl near Commerce Street, it's gravitated that much, so if it's gravitated all the way to Pearl and Commerce, it's absolutely right there beneath the Grand, um, and that is a problem if we want to expand underground. Rather than look at that, and the cost of that is going to be significant yet unknown because of the scale of it, and that's why John's brought in from the bullpen, Mike Blank, because Mike has been dealing very closely with some of these issues as well. The, um, the idea that we came up with was, what if we just went laterally, meaning we go to the west or north, depending on which, which way you look at High Avenue, um, and do we go towards Brown to expand the Grand rather than go beneath the ground? Because not only do we have the volatile compounds, there's also a fear of PFOS being underneath there. There's no evidence of it, but there's suspicions based on some of the history that the DNR has experienced elsewhere, so I don't know if that's from the dry cleaning chemicals, so I'm going to defer to you guys, this is where I'll toss it over to you guys in terms of that.
So, as, as city manager Roloff said, so, there was money that has been put aside for the design fees for this, and part of those fees were to cover environmental consultants to look at everything Mark just described. Um, in the process of working with Ramble, our environmental consultant, they, they look into all of this stuff, they find all of the stuff on the DNR website, and it's because of their findings that this recommendation was brought forward, that there's just too many historical evidence of data for that area to suggest that going into the basement would be any, any way a good move for this renovation, and thus, the idea of going west, going lateral, was brought forward. So, um, that's where things have now shifted, the plan has now evolved to more of a Western design of going that way, um, and I, I think we're getting to a point where we could probably, hopefully, bring more information forward when that time is right.
And just to augment what, what these two folks have said, um, we had scheduled a variety of different projects that we wanted to update in the Grand, um, some ADA issues, some restroom issues, um, so that was one component, and then in tandem with that, the Grand Opera House, uh, um, Foundation, who works with, um, the staff there and establishes the programming, they came to us and also talked to us about, um, some enhancements that they've had on their list to have dialogue with us about for quite some time. So, that discussion about our structural issues as well as their enhancement issues came together for this discussion about, um, improving the building itself, and you, I know all the council members are also aware of, um, Ashgosh Visioning, some of the plans for the downtown area, how to improve that locale, um, not only on Main Street, but all the way down to the water, and I know that's an issue that council members are aware of, so it's kind of a, a confluence of issues that are coming together at the same time, and that's part of this, part of the consideration associated with this initiative too.
So, let me give you some background, what the council had previously given us direction to do was use a half million in ARPA money towards design, and then it was estimated to be a $6 million construction project prior to all these environmental issues coming up. The estimate and what Fitz said regarding, you know, trying to make it more in keeping with the downtown visioning and everything, we're looking at a $10 million project. The Grand has stepped up and said they will continue to commit to half of those funds, fundraising-wise, but again, that, that's another thing, so we talked about the different facilities that we were talking about earlier, we have to, we have to throw that into the mix. We held off, we were originally working on a memorandum of understanding with the Grand Opera House Foundation, when these environmental issues came to the forefront, we held off on doing the agreement because what are we agreeing to? Um, the Grand is in a position where they're, they want to start fundraising, they know that a $5 million fundraising effort is going to need a lot more lead time than a $3 million fundraising effort, um, but this will position the Grand for, it will be, hate to use, use the pun, but it will be grander than what we originally were talking about, but, um, the idea is that it fits in with the long-term, uh, downtown visioning, and, and I think the Grand is committed to raise that money. Our tentative agreement with them was, they needed to raise their money before we bid it out, so we can't, we wouldn't bid it out until they're ready to go. They've pretty much agreed to that, so much so that they recognize, they'll get a lot of pledges, that will be like a three-year type of pledge, so that, the money won't be there right away, they know, and Rick Herndon, the president of the Grand Board, is a banker, so he understands the logistics of that, and he's prepared to get bridge loans that will bridge pledges with actual receipt of donations, get a bridge loan so that they will produce $5 million when it's time to go. The most optimistic I can envision is that the work will not begin until mid-2026, assuming that they have a very successful 2025 and do their fundraising. Um, I don't think from a budget standpoint for 2025 that the council needs to do any more than get the additional, um, design and, um, environmental, there's still a little bit of environmental work that needs to get done, study-wise, but we're probably looking at less than $700,000. We've already committed, uh, $500,000 in ARPA, so we're probably only looking at $200,000 for the, um, for 2025, but we're looking at a $5 million commitment for the remaining of two years. It would probably be a 2026, 2027 construction, isn't that fair, Mike? Yeah, so that's what we're looking at. That's something that obviously this council, uh, this is news to you, because the last time we left this is, was $3 million. We wanted to make sure we had the numbers done, um, they were too, we didn't have these numbers when we gave you the CIP in August, now we have a better handle on these numbers, that's why we're bringing it to your attention now. Those have gone to the Grand Board, and the Grand's committed to raise $5 million. That doesn't mean they have the $5 million, they're committed to start the fundraising effort. What's important for them is that when they go out to donors, the donors need to know that we're in as well, so while we may not need to budget for this, the, the Grand is going to be seeking a commitment from you, uh, and, and they're going to be, they're going to be contacting you if they haven't already contacted you.
And that kind of brings us back to the memorandum of understanding that Mark referenced earlier, so we have that, based on our last several meetings, we need to update the dates and update some of the dollars, but that will be something that we'll bring to council moving forward, and as Mark said, you know, there's kind of two components of this, there's some of the structural things that we'd like to see done that need to get done there, that's not quite as sexy for donors to contribute toward, but the other part of this is really a very beautiful and, um, I think, pretty extensive plan to renovate that building in such a way where it can be a...
Anchor.
Anchor or jewel that contributes to the comprehensive visioning of that area, and, um, I don't want to put council member Stevenson on the spot, but he happens to be the liaison to that foundation board, and, you know, we can speak to the boring ADA structural stuff, but, you know, maybe council member Stevenson can talk about the other aspect of how the foundation sees this.
Yeah, yeah, so I, uh, while this project is increasing in cost, I think it's, uh, it really does turn into an anchor in the downtown, and we really are creating, uh, kind of like a mini PAC. Uh, the new structure that we've looked at is, uh, a planner-like buildings, I think it's really pretty. Uh, some of the designs we've, we've worked with are really, uh, trying to hearken back to some of William Waters' designs, so it's making more of a modern feel on William Waters' uh, designs with windows and arches and things like that, so, uh, while the project, like I said, has gone a little bit higher, I think the reimagining of this area is going to do a lot for the downtown, uh, it's going to make that area really a centerpiece for our community, and it also expands, I think, usability of the building, where before we were just looking at trying to backfill some offices, we were trying to make the stage and facilities a little bit more usable, now it's, uh, you can cater, it's an event space, it's, uh, it still gets all those, uh, those things that we need with offices and making the stage a little bit more usable, but then also adds, uh, features that we can utilize for other events outside of just, uh, plays and shows and things like that. So, uh, I'm really impressed with the drawings that I've seen, and I, I think from a donor perspective, you, you touched on it, we heard from a lot of our donors that if the project was sexier, we'll donate more, well, the project is sexier now, and so I, I don't think we'll have a problem trying to meet those donor dollars.
I like the idea of it becoming more usable, not useful, but usable, you know, seven days a week, 365 days a year, that more, more people in that building using it in different functions is an important thing, and as we talk about downtown, the viability and the, uh, bringing people to downtown, it's, it's another investment in that space. I'm not, I don't like that the costs keep going up, we're already in for a penny, you know, in for a pound, um, and we own the building, it's our asset, and if we do nothing, we know what's going to happen to it, we're going to be back to where we were, you know, 20 years ago with a failing roof, um, just, instead of, it'll be something else, it'll be failing, so, um, I like the possible outcomes of where it's going. One thing on the funding side, and it's more, maybe semantics, $5 million, whether we budget 3 and 2, and whether we're splitting it, or actually whether we're, we try to put our funding portion into maybe the later part of the construction, let their dollars in the first part, our dollars in the second part possibly, depending on their, their financing, but just to get creative on that, that allows us flexibility within our, our capital improvement budget and our facilities budget over the next several years. We've chatted enough today and yesterday about, we've got lots of things as well, the money will be there, it's just a matter of, do we commit to '26 and '27, or can we put in one year, and it's just a matter of what the finance team at that time thinks is best for us, so it's just something to be considerate of, that, you know, it may make sense to front-load or back-end it, just depending on what our numbers will think.
I want to touch on something about as unsexy as possible, I know, um, because I used to work there, that the plumbing system was never intended to handle 400 people in a 15-minute intermission, um, and there was two backups that I know of, are you saying that that's not going to be rectified with this now?
No, it will be.
It will be, okay, so we're...
We're fixing things of the past, I wouldn't say sins, but imperfections of the past, so the bathrooms, including ADA issues, because the bathrooms...
Oh, yeah.
They were just...
I thought you were saying we weren't touching the basement at all, and that's...
No, we're not.
Okay, okay.
We're not expanding the basement, we're going to, the renovation of the basement will still be done, but it'll just be the existing basement...
Okay.
Because they were talking about going out, and I didn't get into all the de-watering that was going to take place, literally, the uncertainty over the water was if there's PFOS in the water, we might have to ship the water to Texas.
Alabama.
Alabama, it's like, it's an SEC school, don't worry, it won't be Big Ten, um, but, I mean, but Mike, that's what, that was the big fear, is the, the unknown of all, all those factors.
Right. And then, so it'll still get the dressing room redesigned as well, then?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think...
We get a new building after this, plus an addition.
Sure.
So, anybody who hasn't been in there, I literally cannot walk through straight in, in the dressing rooms, like, I have to turn, it is not, um, an acceptable situation.
Right, for some of the utilities, we'll still have to go down, and, you know, I'm glad you brought that up to clarify, it's not like we're leaving that...
Right.
...area below the Grand untouched, but we're really minimizing that, just for the utilities and some of the other areas, right, Mike?
You're going to have excavation for the parking lot, for the slab on grade, you're going to have to bring in utilities, uh, the sanitary storm water, you know, update the sanitary lateral, so there, there is going to be some impacted soils to deal with and some de-watering.
But not anywhere near the degree that we were talking about.
And so potential undergrounding of utilities in that area because of the scope of the building built.
Right.
We would have been spending millions on environmental remediation by not going lower, the monies that we're going to be putting into will go into a building, not into, uh, the environmental...
Remediation, right.
I, I think that's my only worry, is that $10 million price tag for, and I love the Grand, it's amazing, I don't want it to find out that it's going to be a $15 million price tag because, "Oh, hey, now we found this," that, that's my only concern, is making sure we're careful.
And as city manager Roloff said, that was our thought too, if we're going to... And the city manager, Roloff, said that was our thought, too, if we're going to invest that kind of money, let's, let's get some tangible outcome for that, rather than just remediation.
One of the things, as we, because we're going lateral, that would require the acquisition of the Thompson Building.
Yep.
And the Thompson Building, like the Grand, has, you know, under, underneath, the ground is, is contaminated, so we want to minimize any ground disturbance, if at all possible. The excavation that Mike refers to is pretty much parking lot excavation, first floor type of stuff, not, not, you know, over-excavating and then hauling that, and the minute, the minute you start digging up around the downtown area, because we're close to the river, the water is going to be significant, so we avoid that, or we minimize it. I shouldn't say we avoid it, but we minimize it significantly.
But as City Manager Roloff mentioned, the, the scope of this project really extends that entire block, so it's pretty impressive, the preliminary renderings of it and how it will hopefully impact that downtown area, so it's, it's something to keep on the radar for sure.
So that's going to require us to, you know, make a slight modification for the 2025, because we're only going to need the additional design work, but, but there's no sense in doing the extra design work if you're not committed to do the, as, as the mayor said, '26, '27, we might be able to shuffle that around a little bit, but we're still going to have to come up with that in '25 and '20, '26 and '27.
So how much for '25?
Couple hundred thousand to get the design work.
Well, half of what we have currently, or less, because we have
Oh, yeah, less.
We have a million.
What, what would you think we need to get the, the design finished? Three, two, three, two, three hundred thousand pre-bid stuff?
Right.
I would say that. Okay. Right? Because we're not going to be doing any, we probably bid it out in the beginning of '26.
Well, their performance schedule comes into play with all that, too, so.
Yeah, well, I'm talking bidding, not building. Building is going to be, from what Joe was saying, they're probably looking at going dark, like, a little earlier, like, May of '26, not go through May, and then a full season plus, so they probably won't be back until maybe even this time in 2027.
'27, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we're really talking about, stretched out, but Matt's question was, you know, what are we going to need?
I would say three, maybe four.
Just as pre-
To finish, finish out the design?
Yeah.
And any other environmental?
These numbers include half the funding from the Grand.
Yeah.
So it's half city, half Grand, so that's why it's higher.
Uh, any more with the Grand?
Well, I was going to say, yeah, any more with the Grand.
From you, this will be time to take a break.
Yeah. All right, so we're going to take a break, we're a little bit past the half of when we start moving, moving time slots around. If we go too much longer, we're not going to get one in before lunch, so. We'll only take a short break now, maybe 10 minutes-ish, a few-ish closer to 10 than 15, and then we can get back, wrap up administrative services, and see where we go from there. About time.
The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. The Oshkosh Common Council is currently in a break. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. This is GovTV, opening accessibility and understanding of local government, helping you to be informed and involved. Also streaming live and on demand at oshkoshmedia.org and radio simulcast on Oshkosh FM 101.9. Like us on Facebook at our Oshkosh Media page. For a schedule of all GovTV programming, visit our website at oshkoshmedia.org. Please stay with us, coverage will resume shortly.
The Oshkosh Convention Center. And this budget is, um, not a traditional budget, it's a budget that is, is kind of a holding budget that illustrates how we clear some of the debt that exists associated with the convention center, and also is a, is a holding budget. It has one staff person assigned to it, I think our special events coordinator is assigned to this budget, but it really is a clearinghouse budget, I think Julie might be able to describe it a little bit better from a, from an accounting perspective, but
I think that's pretty accurate, I mean, this is a lot of I mean, this is a lot of, a lot of the room tax goes to this budget. So the portion that the city gets to keep helps fund some of these enhancements that we need to do for this convention center.
Right. But we're happy to answer any questions you might have about it. We talked a little bit about some of the initiatives planned for the refresh. But it is dependent upon some of the improvements the hotel is currently engaged in.
The room tax, 2% of the room tax exists exclusively for debt on the convention center. If we didn't have debt on the convention center, the tax would go away. So the idea is that as improvements come up, like will be in 2026, we'll do debt. We've been fortunate in the past where we've been able to avoid general obligation debt on that. The state trust fund loan has actually accepted the commitment of room tax funds as a revenue source. So technically, it becomes a revenue note rather than a revenue borrowing, rather than a general obligation borrowing, which is pretty unique. But I think we made a pretty good case a few years back for the 2017 round of improvements. So now for the 2026 round, we'll do something similar. So the room tax is that exclusive funding source. 6% goes to the CBB for their operations. And to their credit, the CBB, they don't have to do this, but they do it. They set aside a portion of their funds for a capital development fund, which works very well in funding some things that they feel will help bring tourism. And then the remaining 20% stays within the city for our share of our obligations for the convention center. We also use it for special events. There's some support for the GRAND, some of the GRANDs operating, our portion, our share of contributing to the GRAND operations comes out of that. That's a little over $200,000 annually. And because the room tax fund, because room taxes have done so well, there was a threshold that the GRAND had never exceeded. But now that we're over $2 million annually in room taxes, we've got an escalator clause for the GRAND. And that's the first time that we've been able to trigger that during the lifetime of that agreement. So that's a good thing as well.
So those are all important. I think legacy things for the council to understand, not only as we move forward, but after City Manager Roloff retires, you know, the fact that ordinarily, sometimes debt is looked at as a not-so-good thing. But in this case, it really is a facilitator for additional initiatives that the council may want to consider.
And one of Fitz's tasks of me is to memorialize everything, a lot of what I just told you, and put it to more expansion so that, because this was put together with the previous director of the CBB and myself.
Yes.
And so now, we want to memorialize it. And so I'll provide that little gospel.
Well, it's good that Finance Director Collins is on board, and she understands how that was established and how it works going forward too.
This is a good use of a funding source that doesn't rely on the local taxpayers to support the convention center, you know, those types of activities.
Yeah. And to clarify, the room tax is gathered from not just the hotel associated with the convention center. I've had some citizens ask me that. And no, it's a source from all of the hotels that are available.
And our short-term rentals.
Right. Yep. For people that may not understand it. So if there are any more questions about that budget, John's remaining budget is the parking ramp, the convention center parking ramp. And I know John, over the years, just like we talked about with some of the forward thinking associated with facilities, I think John and his folks have done a good job working with a consultant, planning improvements, maintenance associated with the ramp going forward. I think we had a decade-long plan, John, and maybe you can just speak briefly about this budget?
Right. Well, WGI is the consultant we hired to evaluate the status of the ramp to make sure that we're keeping it in good shape for the foreseeable future. But more importantly, I think a lot of the credit goes to City Manager Roloff for working out the deal for the $3 a night if you stay at the hotel. $3 of your room cost goes into this fund. And then that fund, of course, funds any maintenance to the ramp. So it takes care of itself in that regard. And I think that's been a very successful project over the last several years, and it continues to fund itself very well. So we worked then, as I said, with WGNI, our engineering firm, to look at all the various things in the ramp and make sure that we're on a good schedule to keep it up to par with how it should be. This year, we did have a set of scheduled repairs. I'm not going to bore you with all the details of what was done, but it basically keeps the ramp in good shape. We did some stairwell improvements, some ceiling of the weatherproofing, and building envelope kind of things there. So we've also done some, we've got the cameras installed, thanks to Tony and Scooter and Electric for helping us with that. And so we just try to keep the ramp in good working condition, of course, to make whatever we can do to fulfill our end of the maintenance agreement for the operator agreement.
Any questions about the ramp? All right. Well, before we move to HR, HR-related budgets, I know that the council has talked quite a bit in CIP budget sessions about, more specifically, City Hall and that facility project, and your comfort with budgeting for that. I know we had a special session with the council that we provided at the last council meeting, talking about updating some of the numbers and looking at different options. So before we go forward into the HR area, we're certainly willing to talk about that issue if the council would like to do that. Do you want to just talk briefly as an introduction, John, about where we're at?
You may recall, we hired CUNY architects to update the City Hall space needs assessment. The original assessment was done, I believe, in 2018 by FGM. And CUNY went through, and you may recall this from last Tuesday's council meeting, CUNY went through, did a complete assessment of City Hall, met with all the departments twice, evaluated their future needs, and then came up with three scenarios. Renovating the existing City Hall site here in the building we're in, considering the city center as a potential renovation site, and a new site somewhere off-campus on City Land somewhere. So they put together those proposals, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I think they ranged from roughly $30 million to $35 million for those various options.
Right.
That's kind of where we're at with everything.
Yes. I know it was a big dollar item, and I know council, when they look at the CIP, is not only looking at the individual year, but looking forward. Because it's such a big item, as City Manager Roloff talked about, when you have a big capital item, oftentimes, a strategy to help facilitate that development is to spread it over time. And I know that's something that council members didn't feel comfortable committing to until they could receive more information, and certainly in the way of more of an updated number. Because when we originally took a look at that, I think John said it was back in 2018.
Just wanted to clarify, so the option to acquire a new site, a new building, the option three on that list, there isn't a site that's targeted, is that correct? Like, there is no known option?
Right. We talked a little bit, we talked briefly about it, I think, during the workshop. There isn't a site in the central city that's targeted, that the city owns. Most of the city property the city owns are in the industrial sites right now, and they're on the far north and southern ends of our city limits. So that is a detriment to a clean site build. That doesn't mean we couldn't acquire property, but it becomes more complicated there.
Fitz, you know that I feel fairly strongly on this topic. I do think City Center is the right location. And I think the PR tech over-stated the price. Frankly, I wasn't necessarily happy with the schematics that he put out there for City Center, because there really weren't any. It was just kind of, we may do this, we may do this, we may cut a hole in the ceiling, you know, what have you. And I understand we weren't asking him to do, you know, the exacts of where people would sit and whatnot. But I feel like it didn't necessarily fairly portray City Center well, as opposed to the very laid-out options from City Hall as currently renovating this building. So I have two questions about this. The first one is, when council decides to go ahead and make a decision whether we stay here, whether we go to City Center, what have you, what would be the rough timeline for that? So when things would get started? I know it's more of an operational question. But question two is that if we do decide to remain in this specific building, where's everybody going to work while we got this place?
Right. I think those are all great questions. And just to address your first question about how detailed we established the plans for City Center, fully hear you and understand you about that. It was a balance between becoming too detailed. We didn't want to be too presumptive about what council mayor may wish to do.
I understand that.
So we just erred on the side of trying to create comparisons that we believe would have been apples-to-apple comparisons. A lot of the numbers associated with that were based on assumptions. And we tried to put disclaimers in there, but we wanted to try to come up with a fair comparison, and that's why it was so generic. And in regard to the timeline, it really depends on what the council provides direction for us to do. I think it appeared, based on the workshop, that there was some interest in going forward and exploring the City Center option a little bit more, and we certainly can do that. And then finally, to your question about what would we do if we renovated this building and stayed? We'd have to have temporary housing. The idea would be we'd move out, we'd gut the entire building, and then we would move back. We discussed some scenarios about two floors at a time, but I don't know if that's really feasible, because it involves a whole variety of things, including some of the technology issues that we touched on earlier with Tony. So one of the benefits to the City Center option would be, whatever renovation needed to be done, we could work on that project, and we could move when it's completely finished.
Turnkey.
Right. Exactly. So that is an advantage, I think, to that option. And John, Mike, you have anything you want to add on to anything I said about those questions from Councilmember Floem?
I think because, I think one of the advantages of City Center was that, and I think it goes to your question, Councilmember Floem, in terms of, you know, why there was no detail, it's a cleaner slate. It's easier. This is a very contained building, and so it needed a little more. But even those, don't overthink what CUNY architects did. They took standard office models and just plucked them in, and just to show that it would fit. It will fit in City Center. I think they wanted to demonstrate it was capable of fitting here. It will easily fill in City Center. Not even a problem, which is why they didn't get into the details of it.
Right. Yeah. And the owners of City Center have reached out and been very gracious about being willing to provide additional information, which we certainly appreciate.
I'd love to see that happen.
But we didn't want to overstep our place with the council. You know, we respect the decision that you all are going to make with this. And before we go too far with that, we want to make sure we hear what the proper direction is.
What useful life is a question for me. So you renovate an existing structure, you stick a ton of money into it, how long am I going to get out of it before it becomes obsolete again, and now we need to do the same thing over? For either an existing, point-blank this structure, another existing structure, compared to useful life of a brand-new build? Brand-new build, I'm going to get longer out of. Period. It will happen. So useful life of renovating this structure compared to renovating, I dislike that we're talking about a very specific piece of property, because it creates this narrative in the public that it's just happening, and that means it's not happening because the direction has not been given. So what useful life of those two rebuilds? 30 to 40 only?
I would quite frankly like to defer that to someone more qualified than myself to answer that in terms of, if there's a better option, that's your question, is would one last longer than another? I don't have that answer.
And I'm certainly not, I don't want to presume to be more qualified than anyone here at the table. But I can point to a comment that John Wallencamp made at the workshop, for those folks who didn't see it. If we were to do this building, it would be completely gutted, and we'd just have the concrete facade, and everything else would be brand-new. So it would be kind of a de facto new building, with the exception of the concrete exterior. And based on our preliminary assessment of the City Center, you know, I believe that John was pleasantly surprised at the condition. And although we hadn't got too deeply into what would be renovated, how it would be detailed, I think the positive outcome of that was, it was, his assessment was that it was large, and that we had a lot of flexibility there.
That's fair.
And then your point about a brand-new build, of course, it would be brand-new. But everything that we do is going to require pretty extensive demolition and renovation.
So John, on that subject, at the workshop, he said it would be down to the brick, basically, because everything inside the building is not worth saving.
Right.
So my question comes down to, we put a line item of $1 or $2 million as a guess for getting out of this building. But if we're going to sell this to a developer, you know, I've heard, use this for apartments, use this for what? They're going to have to do the same thing, would they not? And that's going to put us in a position where we're not only likely not going to get $1 or $2 million out of it, we would end up tiff, you know, like providing incentive or, you know. That's above my pay grade. But just looking at that was my first concern.
Right. It's pretty hard to speculate what we would get with this building. And actually, you know, we had meetings with John, City Manager Roloff, I, Mike, John, I think Tony even weighed in on some of those meetings. It's really hard to speculate. The building next door was just recently bought, and there was a price that was, a purchase price that was surprisingly high for that building, although it needed some significant renovation to meet the needs that they had. And the other factor that people may not understand is when you have a public building that's for sale, oftentimes, the price is inflated, because then there's donations that occur back to the nonprofit. So it's hard to zero in on a price and the value. And of course, that's a negotiated process too. So we wouldn't want to put a value on it and diminish our ability to negotiate, to handcuff the council. So that's my non-answer to that question, but it's a good point.
I will note that a, I guess I, I don't have a strong feeling one way or the other, but if we did redevelop this building, it would be significantly cheaper to redevelop it if we sold it for housing. I mean, we're stripping it down to the studs. That type of renovation is significantly more expensive than if somebody were to rehab the building. I think it would still require money, but not as much money as what we would be putting into it. And I guess other comments, if we do, went with like a build option, I am pretty married to the central city. If we went with any of these options, I want to make sure it's somewhere downtown, is my opinion. And if we did go with City Center too, I'd like that to be like a full site view. I know that that's a lot of more moving parts, but I think we should be looking at that site as a full redevelopment. We should be including some of our private partners that have stake in that site. So just a few things. Are you guys looking for direction from us now or in the near future on City Hall?
We're certainly not looking for anything specific. But I know that in terms of planning and the CIP, that was a concern that council brought up. They didn't feel comfortable committing to a planned future project. So, and as we discussed with... And as we discussed with John Wallencamp, they'll continue to be asking a question of cost. And to speak about the existing dynamic with City Hall, I think for other council members that have been here in the past, I think they know that we've done everything we possibly could to maximize every square inch of this building, including renovating janitors' closets and, but we're pretty much maxed out right now. And again, I'm not asking for Scooter to come and give a testimonial, we want to spare you of that, but he's often said we can't plug in another hot plate here at City Hall from an electrical systems perspective.
We need a new City Hall, I think.
It is something that has to be addressed, and you know, as we talked about before, we wouldn't be doing our jobs if we didn't bring this to your attention. And, I mean, you all have the tough job of trying to figure out, you know, how to prioritize all these things, but it really isn't coming upon us to share this information with you and give you an opportunity to consider it.
I mean, it was purposely put in 26 through 28 so to give you more time to, you know, decide what scope of work you wanted and what, and the scope of work is going to dictate the price, then the price is going to dictate, you know, what years and everything. So that was done on purpose. If there's more information you'd like, you know, I think that's warranted. There are a lot of unanswered questions here. What I would suggest is, if you're leaning towards something like the City Center option, I think then you have us program it for 35 million, which I believe was the upper level price. Program the 35 million for those, and then maybe program some monies in 2025 for design because you'll need design, whichever option you pick, and then you can move forward with that. And then you can worry about 26, 27, 28. We're going to get the facility study in May. I would say that it would be appropriate for you to wait until May comes to how you want to necessarily program it. You can design it and say, we got to put it up to 27. I mean, we, I, everybody here would like to see the building modernized earlier, but to the degree you got to, you got to take a look, is it 100 million or not? You know, all the facilities and everything. And I think you got to program all this stuff in because in that program, it's going to be fire stations. It's going to be the grand. It's going to be City Hall. All those things are going to come into play, and so how you fit those all in, it would be kind of a puzzle building type of thing, you know, because you just can't say, well, let's just do it all over five years. And it's like, no project's going to get stretched over five years. This project's year one and two. This year's three, four, and five, or this project's three, four, and five. And I think you want to be able to do that. Until you have the entire thing in front of you, I think you're going to be hesitant, and I totally understand that. But in terms of this one, because it's the, it is the pig and the python, that you probably want to put a little money in for the design, and you don't have to commit to which design you wanted to do yet, but commit to getting the design started so that when you're ready to make a decision, then the designer can start working on it. That's my advice to you.
And just to reiterate, I understand that council hasn't given direction on this yet, but we're currently on a fact-finding mission, looking to find options and exacts. And to Joe's point, if we could get some probably more exact figures down for City Center, I think that would be helpful. I understand that I am partial to certain things, but at the end of the day, if it's cost prohibitive, it's cost prohibitive. So a new site, I do also agree with Councilmember Stevenson on this, I would like it to be in the Central City. I know that those options are limited, but I think for accessibility and equity reasons, that it should be in the Central City if we're a bit low on it. So we probably are going to have to move on this rather soon for at least some design work, to Mark's point, but I just want to see, just want to see more.
The, I understand the site decently enough. A lot of flexibility on that option two site. Big box, and you can put walls wherever you want, kind of. Done through that enough with my current employer and their building attached to that that doesn't keep adding on, throw walls up, tear walls down. One of the things I worry about, and the reason I brought it up in the way I did, is about talking about a very specific site, is we continue to decrease our negotiating power every time you bring it up in public. So at some point, this goes behind closed doors, so it doesn't negatively impact the taxpayers. Because every time we say we like something, it only gives somebody else negotiating power and takes it away from us. So I don't know when that is, and Lynn may need to chime in on that, but at some point, there's a line that says we can't talk about it in public anymore because, for negotiating purposes. I like the idea of Central City as well. Like, there's a lot pointed out, good reasons. And I, the one is, I like having a couple hundred employees in the downtown area spending money at the local shops, grabbing a bite to eat for lunch. We know the values, the Matt Denashkosh plan from about a decade ago detailed out exactly how many dollars get spent for every single employee in the downtown space. Spend a ton of money, if you work in downtown, you spend a ton of money in downtown, and we need that. That helps keep Main Street alive, and because of COVID, we lost, in this building, you know, and buildings around us, I mean, we've lost 1,500, 2,000 employees in the Central City in the last four years. That's real money not being spent down here to restaurants and bars and shops and stuff. So I like that, too. Just to what point, you know, what's the value of that? Where's the tipping point of, you know, meeting one way, meeting another? So I agree on a lot of that, too, so.
Yeah, Mayor, I'm going to agree here with you 100%. And I have some questions. I think they're very good and very valid questions, but I'm not going to ask them here today. And so, but I want my questions answered because they're, I'm going to say this, they're very important to the subject at hand, and as a council member, I want to ferret through, because we have three choices. I want to focus on the one that I think is best, and I want to hear other council members try to figure, because they may have some insight or whatever into something that I don't, and I need to hear that. So Mayor, I think it would be a very good idea for us to schedule some type of meeting here, a closed session meeting, and we got to figure this out.
So just so that we can get it all on the record, I'm not in favor of option three. I think not only is that the most challenging to find the land, build, it's important for me to be downtown, I also think that's the hardest sell, to say, hey, we're going to spend the highest amount of money to build brand-new when we have other options. I also don't think it's necessarily an A or B. You know, we've talked about one other spot. There may be others, I don't know. But I do have a couple of questions about the, so with the downtown 2.0, whatever we're at now, if we moved into option B, would that help or would that limit that ability to get the riverwalk down to the water? How does that work? Does it play no effect?
Yeah, I don't think that impacts that at all. I think it's important for them to work together, but if you chose that site, it would not impact anything that, any of the options that were put into the downtown visioning. In fact, I think most of, not all of you may be aware that GoEDC and the Community Foundation have partnered to hire House Seal Levine to take a look at what could be done with City Center to potentially, you know, take a look at opening it up and whatnot. So that's one of the options that was listed. The City Hall option would technically fit with any of the options that were put in the envision Ashkosh or the downtown visioning report. So I don't think it's incompatible. And I would say, unless there's some, something that I'm not feeling, Mr. Wallencamp didn't have the opportunity to say it, but he was not going to recommend option three because, frankly, because the unavailability of land in the Central City, because even just thinking about bus stops, I mean, where we own land, we don't have bus service. I mean, so just on that little, in that little instance alone, it's just not worth even talking about. So I, but he was required to give you that. He didn't put as much, he didn't frankly put as much effort into that because, you know, he knew that options A and B were clearly the ones in play, not just because of the price, but because of the feasibility. So I think it's dead, myself.
Why can't we purchase property?
The purchase price for the property was not included in Mr. Wallencamp's estimate.
I understand.
So take that, and you'd have to add that on top.
Again, these are things I want to have in a closed session. I don't want to be talking about this in an open session.
Okay, well, that's.
To that point, if council's all right, why don't I chat with the city manager's office as well as legal and facilities and figure out one, what, some information that we should talk about, that's available to talk about in closed session, because not everything can be talked about there, but what can be. And then why don't we try to schedule a, either a separate meeting or a workshop after a council meeting? We've got a busy couple of weeks coming up, but it's an important topic, we'll find time. Why don't we try to do something specifically dedicated to this topic only, away from this?
And if we can, if we can have an expert at the gentleman that did the whatever, contractor or someone that knows, how much they're going to cost to do this? Well, I don't want, I mean, I know I'm going to get an estimate, but I want an educated estimate, with all due respect to everyone here. You know, I want to ask questions where I'm going to get a pretty accurate answer.
I can work with Mayor, if that's council's.
Maybe get this on the calendar for a better discussion focused on just that.
And actually, to everybody's point, it's the protocol that City Manager Roloff has introduced, and once we have a workshop, he gives the council an opportunity to kind of digest that information, and then we come back to them in some form to ask what their direction could be. So this matches that protocol, whether it's closed session or open session.
Yeah, it could be both, quite honestly.
Yeah.
It may be. Why don't we start working towards that idea?
And to the Mayor's point, the more we talk about this in a closed session, the more we wear away our efficiency.
And I think that's point two.
Good discussion, then. You have a little bit else yet?
Right, all we have is HR and HR-related budgets. So with that, if we could turn to page 377.
You want to go to the back?
No, I'm sorry, HR.
Yeah, let's go to HR.
Let's go to HR first.
Forty-seven.
Yep, page 47. And I think folks are aware that Michelle's division includes human resources, organizational She also has staff that work on insurance, risk management. So we'll be talking about all those issues with the associated budgets that she has. The first one is on page 47, and I think just to, before I let her talk about what's going on in HR, I think one of the more important things that she's been able to do is work on the recruitment challenges that everyone is facing. She's been very diligent, and her staff have been very diligent about not only just recruiting people, but taking a look at our structure, our organizational structure, our classification structure, try to establish career ladders for people. We know that it's easier to recruit people that we already have in the organization and develop them rather than trying to select them from the outside. It makes our vacancy rate maybe a little bit higher, Michelle, right? But I think it's very satisfying for our employees, and then ultimately giving them a chance to advance is something that I know everyone is interested in. So maybe with that brief intro, you can talk a little bit about HR.
Right, so as you mentioned, HR, recruiting and staffing is certainly a large part of that, but also organizational design is very important. And, you know, you heard a lot about our, you know, facilities restructuring. Obviously, that involves a lot of people as well, and making sure we have the right resources in the right place to gain those efficiencies. So we do, we do work with leaders to look at the best organizational design for the city. As we have openings occur, we look at the responsibilities of those, we look at what the city needed versus what the city needs in the future. So that's something that we very actively do with HR, with all of our leaders.
And more deeply to Michelle's point, you know, we have a sense of turnover. What areas are turning over? What classifications are turning over? Why is that taking place? Is it because we're understaffed in those areas? We take a look at labor relations issues. Are there, you know, in a unionized environment, oftentimes there's dispute resolution processes that are initiated because of grievances. So we can see a whole variety of things inside the organization that might contribute to a problem, and all those things come into play when we talk to a department, including our experience with recruitment, when we establish organizational design changes. So I think Michelle's being very modest in terms of how we look at it, but it is a complex process, and of course, we try to accommodate what the departments wish to do.
Right, absolutely. So again, recruitment, retention, labor relations, employee relations, organizational design, organizational development, making sure our people are getting the training and the skills that they need, all certainly part of what HR does, and of course administering all of our city benefits and such. So obviously, all of my budgets are related to all of those areas. From a HR standpoint, you know, we are always looking for efficiencies as well in our processes. We've made a lot of progress in our benefits enrollment type processes, making them a lot less manual, utilizing our systems such as Munis, and we've, you know, taken a lot of the man-hours out of that type of process, which quite frankly we need because recruiting has gone up, you know, exponentially in the last several years when it comes to attracting and retaining. So we do see about a third of our positions are filled through promotions, internal promotions, which is wonderful, but obviously that just takes the vacancy and we fill it two or three times sometimes because we're promoting within which we're so happy that we can, but it certainly still, you know, is a lot of time spent in recruiting for all of those positions. So we do a lot of, a lot of things, and I think we partner very well with our leadership to make sure that we're getting the best bang for our buck, so to speak, with all of the wonderful employees who work here and what they do every day for the city. So budget-wise, my budgets don't have a lot going on. They're pretty static. You know, HR budget, you know, also includes a lot of our citywide trainings, things like diversity, equity, and inclusion, of course, safety and compliance. And next year, we're earmarking some sustainability training for the employees related to the Sustainability Committee, which of course I'm partnering with Director Nyforth on. But nothing really other than that in that budget.
Yeah, I think structurally, we're in a pretty good place from a compensation perspective. We did a class and comp study recently, so I think that's in a pretty good place. From a labor relations perspective, we're settled with all of our agreements, with the exception of fire. We're actively involved in mediation in that group right now. We're hopeful that we can get to a voluntary settlement. So that's taking place. There's one other thing I was going to mention, too, but I can't think of it right now, so. But we have time. Michelle's got a few more budgets.
Right, we do, we do.
So if you have, do you have any questions about HR?
I try to stay away from HR as much as possible.
All right. The next one would be Police and Fire Commission, that's on page 100, and that's an extension of HR. We really use that budget to recruit Police and Fire employees. We've had actually pretty good luck compared to our counterparts. We have a higher vacancy rate, I would say, in fire, but in police, we have some strategies that really contribute to more stability. Historically, we've established Historically, we've established partnerships with UW Ashkosh. We have a CSO program where they work with us and gain practical experience on the job while they're still earning their degree and are involved in traffic control and non-enforcement type of activity. So, having that direct pipeline into our organization gives us the opportunity to observe those employees before they even graduate from college. They get a chance to kinda shop our organization and see if it's a good fit, and then it's more of a known quantity when we actually get to the hire, and it tends to be more successful. In addition to that, we also have a cadet program in police that's proved to be very successful, where we help fund the candidates' time at the academy. So, that's something that I think having those established pipelines to our organization really helps not only us, but the candidates evaluate our organization too, to see if it's gonna be the right fit. In police and fire commission budget, it's really all about funding those recruitments, all the parts associated with that recruitment, including physical examinations, psychological evaluations, all kinds of things, background checks.
Background checks, yes.
Those sorts of things. So, Michelle's talked to the chiefs and tried to determine what their outlook is for recruitment, and then base the budget on that, right, Michelle?
Absolutely, yeah. We anticipate what we think recruiting will be for the next year. Of course, we don't always guess 100% correct, but we're usually pretty close.
Yeah. So, any questions about police and fire commission? Okay, and I think the next budget for Michelle's is 377.
Do you wanna go back to insurance on page 72?
Yes. Let's do that. I was gonna keep all the insurance together, but...
They're all, they're all insurance from here on out.
Okay. I just thought you wanna talk about the benefits fund first.
We can do benefits fund first.
Okay. So, 377. So, that's the Employee Benefits Fund. Finances worked with us to establish this kinda comprehensive budget, so we can capture the costs there. It's a little easier for council to see. And I think council knows too that we've been very successful with, you know, one of the major cost drivers, which is health insurance. Over time, we talked a little bit about it during the budget sessions. We're fortunate that our employees have been healthy and have done a good job trying to stay healthy, but also our partnership with Three Waves Clinic has been successful over time. The council took a chance. We were one of the first public organizations to establish a near-site clinic, I think, as a matter of fact, the first city to do that in the state of Wisconsin, although it's been very popular in the private sector for some time. And so, over time, we've been able to not only mitigate our health insurance costs, but in some years, reduce our health insurance costs. So, with a national trend of 8%, it's pretty, it's pretty remarkable. So, credit to the council for giving us that opportunity, and also for our employees for taking advantage of it. And again, this year, we were able to hold the increase to zero. So, that gives the council a little more flexibility when you're trying to make all these tough decisions with all the other costs you're trying to consider. Anything you wanna add to the benefits fund, Michelle?
Well, and I think I mentioned this at our previous meeting, but, you know, give credit to council for allowing us to invest in the Three Waves Clinic, and to our employees for taking care of their health, doing, you know, making sure they're getting in and seen and staying healthy, making good choices on their benefits usage. I mean, because that is so important, right? If we can prevent it, it's gonna cost one quarter of what's gonna happen if someone, you know, of course develops some, a serious health condition. So, kudos to our council, kudos to our employees for taking care of their health, and kudos to Three Waves for providing the great service that they have been. And, you know, we've continued to increase our population going to Three Waves, which, you know, again, catch it early, and you're gonna have a much better outcome.
Any questions about the benefits fund?
No, but just, I wish we could actually give it longer to talk about, but you can't overstate a 0% increase on a house insurance cost. That is a huge, huge helpful thing in our, in our budget this year, but in any budget, you know, people costs is the number-one thing we do. We're in the service business, and salary, and then stating the obvious, but health insurance. And to Michelle's point, she laid it all out. She probably checked a lot of my boxes, so I'll, as council members, tend to do, I'll echo what she said. But, you know, one, the investment that the city has made into that Three Waves and the partnership we have with the County and School District, with getting employees to use it, it's not always the easiest to get people to change, you know, healthcare providers, but it's a big deal, and it really helps the bottom line for the city, but more importantly, it helps their bottom line at home too, to be able to use that clinic instead of going, you know, racking up an urgent care bill or a, you know, an ER bill or anything like that. It saves real dollars for everybody, and I appreciate you guys working towards and continuing to expand services as possible, and working with our partners to make it a healthy and wise investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. If there aren't any other questions about the Employee Benefits Fund, then we're into risk management, and that's why Paul Brehinger is also here, is our Safety and Risk Management Officer. So, the first budget associated with risk management is on page 71.
Paul was gonna transfer it out this meeting.
I tried, but he did.
And I think Paul, you know, does a great job working with our departments, trying to mitigate our risk, whether it be from a workers' comp perspective, and we'll get to that budget pretty quickly, but also just from a safety perspective. He has a unique way of making his presence known. I'm not besmirching the fact that he's a Minnesota Viking fan, so...
Paul, yes.
But when he shows up with his Viking clipboard onsite, you know, they, they don't shun him, they actually invite him in because they, they like to have that dialogue with him. So, I think, you know, he's very creative in the way he has breaking down any concerns employees have about, you know, his job as a safety officer, and he and Michelle collaborate on a whole variety of different things. I'll just turn it over to them to talk about the budget.
We're on insurance.
Oh, the insurance, okay.
Yeah, talk a little bit about our...
To our, we're on insurance. They do have good news on our insurance. This year, we will be, our last year with Chubb is our property insurance carrier, and next year, we're gonna go over to MPIC. It's good in a couple of things. Number one, MPIC did give us a quote last year that was really competitive, and they said they're still gonna give you that quote for this next year, so we're gonna be saving some money there. With Chubb, we had a $10,000 deductible, and with MPIC, we're gonna go down to $5,000. So, that was good news for our property insurance. Just yesterday, I got some encouraging news. Our site reliability insurance, there's a couple of questions that we have to have answered for under eighty purposes, but it looks like the original estimate that we have, we're gonna save about $5,500 versus that, so a little bit of savings there. Workers' comp, we pay a premium for reinsurance. We pay up to $250,000, I don't think about that, this insurance pays for. After four unsuccessful years of badgering, our, the individual that runs that program, I finally got him convinced that our payroll has nothing to do with our premium, so he's gonna give us a quote, and that's it. In years past, they do an audit on our payroll, and they're gonna say, well, Paul, guess what? You guessed wrong. You owe us more money. I said, it has nothing to do with our payroll. So, he finally committed to making this a living, just gonna have one flat premium, and hopefully it'll stay that way for years to come. So, and I did get it ready, so...
That is no small feat, because I know it's an industry practice for, to do that, but when you have anomalous adjustments to your budget and the pay associated with it, like I mentioned earlier, we did a class and comp study to make sure we were competitive. When that increases, there's no reason why we should pay more for insurance, just because they use that as a measurement, as an industry measurement. And Paul was able to convey that, I think, pretty convincingly, and it helped create savings for, you know, our organization. So, anything else on insurance, Paul, or Michelle?
I don't think so.
Okay, the next budget, I think, is worker compensation, and that's kinda part and parcel with insurance. That's on page 38. Paul alluded to that. Worker comp is all about safety, of course. It's difficult because, you know, when you're in an organization that's as diverse as we are, doing as many things as we do, we know that there is some risk associated with some of the jobs that, that exists in our organization. So, Paul works very hard to try to mitigate and minimize any of those risks, but unfortunately, some of them take place still. Paul, you wanna talk a little bit about where we're at with workers' comp?
Yeah, well, we had mentioned that we do get, you know, turnover, so we have a lot of new employees, and training is a big part of that. Matter of fact, I was doing that this morning, that's why I was a little late, confined space entry training. But we do keep up with that. My next step is going to be taking on some training for supervisors, kinda educate them on workers' comp. Everyone knows what it is, but I don't really know what it is, and how they can help minimize the cost, because again, they're paying for this. Taxpayers are paying for the injury, first tiny up to 250 grand, so trying to help minimize costs there, so...
I think those are excellent points. I would just add to what Paul said, you know, we heard Michelle talk a little bit about our strategy of promoting from within, and although it makes our vacancy rate look a little bit higher, to Paul's point, a lot of those employees understand what we're trying to accomplish from a safety perspective, and have heard and experienced the training that Paul has provided. So, I believe that the fact that we use that strategy to promote from within kinda inadvertently helps us from a risk management perspective, because they're already educated and they understand what the expectations are. A lot of those people move up into supervisory positions, so that further kinda helps us with mitigating costs, and Paul, maybe you can speak to where we're at with the numbers.
Yeah, I think, Mark may have mentioned this before, but we do have a rule to try to build up our fund for paying claims, and we've had to make some adjustments over the years to try to get that built up, and we're doing fine this year. There's a couple of claims out there that might dip into it a little bit more, but it's again, we're making our best guess, and we put this budget together, so a lot can happen in the course of two months, but so far, we're doing fine, so it's a good thing. I thank you guys for approving it, because where it was before, I didn't feel comfortable. As we saw, all it takes is two bad years in it all. It hurts, but we're doing, we're doing fine. Otherwise, everything else is pretty much the same from a budget standpoint, so...
Anything else? Michelle, you wanna add, or...
No, I think obviously, Paul takes a lot of steps to try to make sure that we keep those workers' comp costs as manageable as possible, including, you know, working with, I'm sorry, what is it? They help us get people in faster for appointments.
Ready rebound.
Rebound, you know, because the, again, the sooner we can help people get their injuries taken care of, get them back to work, that's always best for the employee as well as the city.
Anything else, Michelle, from any of your other budgets, HR in general?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Council members, questions?
If I could just add one thing, I don't wanna influence anybody, but if we are gonna go city center, I'll have the Aladdin's Castle, because I've pumped enough quarters in that particular spot in the 70s to probably renovate the entire spot, so...
As a matter of fact, I have some drink chips from the Gray Fox that used to exist down there in my desk.
I'm still coming out of bankruptcy for going to Aladdin's.
Well, thank you, council. Appreciate your giving us an opportunity to talk to you about our, what we're excited about and what we'd like to see happen in the future, so, so thank you.
Do you have anything more for anything that falls under administrative services? HR, facilities, technology? Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sure fits to be picking around. Ten minutes till our normal break is...
Yeah, lunch breaks at noon.
I don't know if it's here or not, okay.
Oh, you saw it.
So, is it here, right?
Whoa, no, it's right here, Mayor.
So, why don't we break now? It's only ten minutes early.
Right through there.
And we'll be back around the one o'clock hour.
Oh, we're gonna...
Oh, do you wanna set up in here?
Yeah, you can set up.
I'm setting up there.